I think Laura and Steve Torino.
Did that go to block?
Yeah, the chairperson and the vice chairperson should be on.
Lisa, can you take with him to see if we're live, if we're ready? Live, okay. All right, it's showtime. Tom. All yours, Tom.
Right here. I'm gonna call the town, the order, what's it, WPA? And regular town council meeting to order. April 7th at 7:00 PM. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice.
Hey, I have an opening statement. Good evening. Tom Zampiano, Mayor. Mayor Vic Big Leone could not be here tonight, and he had asked that by reading your statement. Mayor Bob Big Leone has tested positive for the coronavirus. He's currently quarantined and needs to be day by day. The mayor will not be participating in the meeting in order to focus on his health at this time. On behalf of the town council, I'd like to wish the mayor full and speedy recovery. I would also like to take a moment of silence for the first fatality of North Branford resident from COVID-19 that happened this weekend. I would also like to take a moment of silence for the first fatality of North Branford resident. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our viewers to our new virtual meeting format on Zoom, which is being broadcast via Totaka TV Facebook Live page, which will also allow public comment by way of posts. In addition to our live stream, the town council has set up an email account at the following address. For those residents who wish to make a comment. And finally, we have also set up a call in number for you to leave us a message. The number is 475-655-0400. If you are calling in, please state your name and address for the record.
Can I just interrupt for a moment? There is someone with their microphone on, so I am unable to hear in order to take notes.
Okay, yes, if Yes, if we could have everyone who's To mute their system and their microphone to unmute, please.
So if I could just have Deputy Mayor, if you could please repeat the public comments. Dot com. Thank you.
Okay, so roll call.
Hello?
Mayor Big Leone, we know is out.
I can't hear it. I can't hear. How do you turn it up?
Do you want headphones?
Oh, yeah, turn it up.
It doesn't go off any matter.
I got headphones.
Wait a minute. You are telling us to mute, and now you're taking a roll call. Which is it?
Well, you're going
People that are not needing to speak currently need to be muted. When you are supposed to be speaking, for instance, to say that you're here, you would unmute yourself.
I don't get it still. Do we, the town council, mute themselves, or do we stay on live?
You could stay on live, Joe. There's not that much interference with just the nine council members.
Thank you, Mike.
Councillor Angeloni?
Here.
Councillor Diamond?
Here.
Councillor Duty?
Here.
Councillor Fawnan?
Here.
Councillor Goode?
Here.
Councillor Paternoster?
Here.
Councillor Pollicia?
Here.
Okay. Can we get a motion for the previous minutes of March 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any correction? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Diamond? Councillor Pollicia?
Yeah.
Okay, get a motion for the March 31st minutes?
So moved.
Second. Were there any corrections?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks.
With all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so, item three, new underwater pollution control authority agenda, new business. A request to connect a sanitary sewers, 1444 Middletown Avenue, map 67D lot 76, White Hollow White Hollow, Middletown Avenue sanitary sewer.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go briefly through this application. It's a property with an existing home on it, 1444 Middletown Avenue. It's an older colonial style home, fronting on Route 17. It's because it's on Route 17 and within the White Hollow, Middletown Avenue sewer project area, it falls under the White Hollow, Middletown Avenue sewer ordinance. And there's certain criteria that needs to be met to allow properties along there to connect in because it's a limited capacity sewer system. In accordance with the ordinance, there's actually four criteria. One is it has to be an existing lot with an existing building at the time of application, so this meets that criteria. Two is the East Shore Health District has to make finding that they can't make a feasible repair to the existing system on the property. And there is a letter from East Shore including your application dated March 4th regarding that. The third criteria is it can't be of such quantity that it has a adverse impact on capacity to the sewer system. It's only one lot, so it's minimal discharge, so that definitely complies with that. And there was a fourth criteria. It had to meet DEP's approval. Because it was, we had funding, we had grant funds, and we had loan funds from DEP. That no longer applies. And there's a letter or an email from DEP verifying that included with it for the fact. Well, basically, it meets all the criteria, but there is a suggested motion for consideration. And the bigger one is, is to have to pay a connection fee of $12,300 to be able to connect into the sanitary sewer, and they have to enter in an agreement with the town. The agreement would be prepared by the town's attorney. That's basically it. I think it's pretty straightforward, and there is this adjusted motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move this adjusted motion.
Second.
Need discussion? Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next item, item four, town manager's report.
Yeah.
COVID-19 update.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chair, do you want to, I can certainly forego that if the, if there's a motion to amend the agenda to take up the the budget items, or the Board of Ed, or the Fire Department? I think Rose Angeloni had mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting.
We're just, we're gonna do that when we get to number seven. We're just gonna move the items in number seven, so
Okay.
Is your report very long?
No.
Okay, then go ahead. You can do your report quick.
Okay. So, at this point in time, I, we have, for a COVID-19 update, 11 positive cases in North Branford. And as the Deputy Mayor announced, one of those is the mayor. And unfortunately, within the reports we had this weekend, one fatality of a 36-year-old female. And those numbers obviously are changing. I do not have updated numbers. Those numbers as are from yesterday. So I don't have today's numbers. But I will, I will, I believe, think that Mr. Pascasilla is on the line in joining this meeting. Mike is the director for the East Shore District Health Department, so maybe at the end, he could fill us in if he's, if he's listening. We continue to work on sourcing for PPE, the protective equipment that we need for our first responders. And we'll continue to turn over every rock and every source that we can to try and get those supplies moving and get them ordered, get them here. We're working on following the East Shore Health District guidance on updates like wearing masks or face covers that have recently come out as recommended from the CDC. We continue to monitor the governor's executive orders that keep changing, and, and as they come out, they, they are also modified. As you'll see in one of the later items on the agenda for Executive Order 7S. So we'll deal with that a little bit later. We also having weekly briefings with the command staff, department heads, and also putting information out to the public. So that's where we stand on a, on a COVID update. It's obviously ever evolving and changing very rapidly. We're trying to stay on top of that and communicate and disseminate information as much as, as we can, as fast as we can. So with that, I don't know if Mike Pascasilla can, can hear us, if he's participating. If, Mike, if you have an update on, on cases? Or anything to add?
Yes, I can. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so let me, let me, before I get into the numbers in the state and local report, just to reemphasize what Mike was saying, we are in regular contact with town employees. The incident command structure has been implemented, and on a regular basis, we're getting information from the Centers of Disease Control and the State Department of Public Health. As Mike said, it's ever changing, and as it changes, we're giving the, the updates. We're also having three weekly calls with the State Department of Public Health and one call with the CDC. So as things evolve, and they will continue to evolve, we'll continue to let the, the staff know what the latest is. As Mike said, the late, one of the latest recommendation is, is wear face coverings. And so I sent the information to Mike and staff, and I'm not sure if you got that out yet, Mike, but that's gonna be one of the biggest recommendations coming down. With respect to COVID-19 in the state, let me give you the report as of about an hour ago. So statewide, we have 7,781 positive cases of COVID-19. We have 277 fatalities, and currently, we have 1,380 hospitalizations throughout the state. In the town of North Branford, these are the latest numbers, we have 13 positive COVID-19 cases in North Branford, and we have one fatality that occurred this weekend. Our main focus right now is our nursing homes. When we look at the data from the nursing homes, roughly about 34% of all the nursing homes have been impacted, and we expect more to come. What I will say is that this moment in time, Evergreen Woods, we're in regular contact with them, and they are reporting no positive cases or people with symptoms. So we'll have to see where, where that goes, but as of right now, there are, there are no positive cases. If you're following the news, you'll know that some of our other nursing homes and assisted living facilities have been impacted. And we're working regularly with the Department of Public Health on that, and they are sending teams to those nursing homes. Just as a matter of clarity, the East Shore District Health Department doesn't license assisted living or nursing homes. The State Department of Public Health does. What we do is we offer assistance and support, and we're on the call, we're on the call with them every single day just to monitor and make sure that they're following best practices. And so, so that's where we stand right now. If I could just ask one thing is social distancing. We are having some issues in our grocery stores throughout the state, and some folks are not, not following the social distancing, and so we really want to reinforce that, you know, along with, you know, the general recommendations of washing your hands and staying, you know, six feet away from, from people and practicing social distancing. We, we met with all our grocery stores, and we went over and implemented some, some controls, some crowd control, putting your lines at the cash register to try to encourage the social distancing. The grocery stores have also agreed to do a better job monitoring it, and so now they have monitors throughout the, the grocery store. So that's, that's the report in a nutshell. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, Michael, I have a question.
Yes.
Since one of our town council people contacted Corona, Corona, the coronavirus, we were at a meeting in early March. Should any of the town council people be concerned about this virus?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, and we, we did do a trace back. And what we found is, when we look at the timelines and when the individual was symptomatic, there were no significant exposures. So if there were, we would have, we would have contacted the town council. So the short answer is there is no significant exposure based on the criteria given to us by CDC and state for case backs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. If you have to speak up, I can't hear.
Okay, Vince Mace on Board of Ed. You said that there's 13 positive cases in North Branford. Is, can you give us how many on the north side and how many on the North Branford side? Because we have two sides of the town. Is that possible?
I don't have that breakdown in front of me. What the state does is Vegas, they just give us encoded, just says North Branford. But I, I can certainly get that data. I just don't have it in front of me because it's not broken down.
I would appreciate that, because it controls our data which side of the town it's, it's more aggressive than from the other side, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly provide that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
All right, you're welcome, Mike.
That's it for my COVID-19 report.
Okay, thank you. Next item, five citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence.
Yeah, there was, I, I have one, actually two, and I believe I circulated that. Sorry, I'm looking for that. It was a email. Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. One email in from Mr. Cliff Potter about the Poco Festival, and I think that you should have a copy of that, but that he is concerned that many of the council may have never been exposed or worked at the Potato Fest and, and might not understand the true nature of what you might be voting on tonight later in the meeting. The Potato Fest is a well-run town event run by very dedicated volunteers, and it believes the REC Commission understands this, and the commission members know how this works and how hard it is to, to please and listen to groups that give their advice. What he's looking for is to ask tonight that someone that you look to wait until mid-May, and again, that, that follows with the correspondence that has come from the REC Commission itself. Other than that, the only other email or call that I received under participates or public comment was from Mr. Bill Savistano, also commenting on an agenda item later on in the agenda with regard to the Memorial Day Parade, and that if, if possible, that some consideration be made for some type of small or limited ceremony in some way, if it is to be canceled. And so he would hope that we could creatively figure out some way to do something on Memorial Day. And I believe that's it for public comment.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Next item is resignation and appointments, and there's nothing listed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move around some of the items in item seven, new business. I'd like to move items H, I, and J to the, to the beginning of this section in the order of J, Discussion on Budget and Schedule, Budget, Schedule and Referendum, then H, Board of Ed, Budget Presentation, then I, Fire Department, Budget Presentation.
Okay.
Second.
Need discussion? Full discussion?
With all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so our seven J, Discussion on Budget, Schedule and Referendum.
Right, so you have, I emailed a, an item to you that I can go through. The council had asked about budget schedule and referendum if possible, working backwards to try and get a possible referendum. And so I've met with Lisa, Anthony, and Ken about that process, and put together a outline timeline that would, would go something like this. April 7th, board and fire presentations this evening. The 14th, next week, Police Department, Public Works, presentations. On the 21st, a public hearing on the budget. The April 22nd and 23rd, we'd have budget workshops and finalize the budget and approve the question for referendum. April 29th, legal notice sent to the Sound and other newspapers. May 7th, Sound publication date. May 19th, holding a budget referendum in order to have the council adopt it for June 2nd. And June 8th, deadline for tax bills to be sent to the printer. So this could be done. I just don't know what it's going to look like with respect to a referendum if, in fact, we are allowed to open, to use the polling places, or if it's going to be some sort of modification of a referendum where we have voters driving up in their cars to try and vote, as, as one town, Vernon, did. Others may try that, I'm not sure. But it becomes a planning and logistics Challenge. Challenge, thank you, yes. It would be a challenge to pull that off. And there are other concerns that, that the clerk has, Lisa has discussed with us, logistics of trying to do this, and, and also whether or not there'd be any thought of absentee ballots. And that is also problematic with respect to both supplies and manpower to respond to any type of mail-in ballot, as we are operating on bare bones, one, two members. I'm not sure how we could get that done in a timely fashion, if we could at all. So it is possible to do a modified. We'd have to look at a large parking area or parking lot like MBIS High School complex and try to arrange something if the council wanted to pursue that method of a referendum. That could be possible. Timeline is, is laid out, is doable, and, you know, we, we can move those dates around if necessary. But it was just a template and a starting point to get the discussion going. I do have Anthony and Lisa here. Answer any questions the council may have with respect to the details or timing.
Part of my concern is, we had discussed earlier for a public, if we had the public hearing, which is when we, the town and the Board of Ed both presents their budget, is leaving that public hearing open for a little bit so that people would have the opportunity to either email or respond to it. And according to this schedule, we start budget workshops immediately the next day. So I was wondering if there's any leeway in there that we leave it open? Because I see the legal notice doesn't go until April 29th. So if we finalize the budget the following Tuesday on the 28th, kind of spaced out our workshops and finalize the budget on the 28th so that the legal notice is then sent on the 29th? Does that work?
Oh, yeah, that can work, sure. I don't see any reason why at this point that, that couldn't work, as long as we hit the, the legal notice being sent out on the 29th.
Are you leaving the referendum the same date?
Yeah, trying to, trying to, yes. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Lisa just step a little closer. Still respecting our distance, but I think you can stand right here, and they'll be able to see you if you stand six feet back there. I'll just to the side, maybe you could see.
My question is, if you move that to the 28th, is your plan to keep the budget referendum on the same date? Ac absentee ballots need to be ready three weeks prior to the budget referendum.
I wasn't moving, I didn't move the budget referendum.
Right, but you're moving the finalization of the budget with a question, which I can't print ballots until after you finalize the budget. I have
Okay.
And the ballots need to be ready three weeks prior to the budget referendum.
Which would?
Which is the 28th?
Nineteen.
Which we would have, we would have three weeks. Oh, they have to be ready? Oh, they have to be ready? The ballots have to be ready?
Have to be issued three weeks prior to the budget referendum. And the problem we're having is we're trying to set up for the presidential primaries, which are, which will be June 2nd. And most likely, we're gonna see an executive order in the next couple of days that moves that to all absentee ballots. And currently, the town clerks do not have enough supplies for that. So if we move forward with a budget referendum, we would have to leave absentee ballots open as a possibility for the electors, for the voters. I have no envelopes. Mike will have to find me envelopes that I'll have to number myself to try and meet the need. There are a lot of complications. We're on a tight schedule because of the presidential primaries. Everything has to be thought of in conjunction with June 2nd.
Well, what if, let me just, thinking ahead, I mean, we're going to hear presentations tonight. Maybe it makes sense to move up the hearing to next week, the 14th. And we can't do that, because, and yeah, I'm just thinking out loud here, and we can't do that because we haven't got it, we haven't got it printed either. This is about as tight as we can, and I'm looking, I'm looking for ways to try and get this done. But I don't think there's many options available, given the constraints that we have to operate under.
So could we, I know in the past, it's like the public hearing is that night they speak and then they can't, you know, there's no other comments. But if we kept that open and still worked our budget workshops and kept it in, you know, finished it on the 23rd, like you have there, and closed, you know, like, so the people would have two days to respond to the public hearing. Does that work?
Could even keep it open right to the 20th?
Well, 23rd is making the final cut, so that's, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So is the rest of the council?
Are you saying, when you say respond, are you saying like a vote? Like email?
No, that they have, they have a chance to comment. You know, at the public hearing is when they get, that's the only time that they get to speak about the budget. And so if we do it, if it's only that night that we present and everything is online, it doesn't give them hardly any opportunity at all. Because some people might not be able to see it live. You know, that they, if they watched it the next day, they would still have the opportunity to comment.
And that would be by email?
Yeah, we have the, you know, the email address that they can respond to. Or if there's some on that night at the public, they can respond on Facebook. So.
Whatever way, we have, it's important for us to include the public. So whatever we have to do, we're gonna have to make an adjustment.
Well, I like, I like the idea of giving them the 22nd and 23rd to make comments.
Okay.
Is there a way, I don't know what the Totaka Times deadlines are. Is there a way to also get that into the Totaka Times? In time for people to know that they could do that on the 22nd and 23rd?
That should be sufficient time. Well, we can review that.
Yeah, right now, he doesn't, I don't know which issues are scheduled to get printed and sent out to the homes. And on the ones that don't get sent out, you can still see it online. I think we're just gonna have to, you know, get information, whether it's on the website, you know, on the Facebook page, you know, at any means that we have to let people know when the public hearing is and how they can respond to it.
So I see Michelle made a comment that it's two weeks before the hearing. We would have to be in the Totaka Times.
Well, he prints every two weeks, so I don't know.
Well, she's saying it's two weeks before the.
No, no. No, she said he prints every two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I, then I misread it.
Unfortunately, this year, it's gonna be tough for everything. So, you know, we just, we're gonna have to go with what we can. And the public's gonna have to understand that we're in a tight box.
I think we just do the best we can to try to get public comment, give them an opportunity.
That's, I mean, that's fine, as long as we don't close. The biggest thing is we don't close the public hearing that night. We just keep it open until the 23rd so that people have a chance to respond. And we can close it just before we, you know, start working on the, on analyzing the budget.
His next issue is dated April 7.
Would it make sense to maybe open it up before the meeting? And allow them to leave comments before the meeting? And then you could actually close that night rather than leaving it open after the meeting?
Well, but the budget isn't presented yet.
But will it be posted?
No.
No.
No, that's when it's, that's when it's presented. It's not even printed yet or anything.
Is it possible to solicit telephone comments? There's a couple of call-in numbers that people use?
Yes, we have.
On the Zoom meeting, there are call-in numbers.
Maybe encourage people that night and convene the next night just to solicit phone comments as well as DMing.
That's, that's fine.
Deadline is this Friday for publication on the 17th, so we'll get it in there.
Yeah, so I just heard from Anthony, he was looking at the publication deadlines is.
This Friday.
This Friday. No, he's, oh, that's right.
For the 17th. Date is the 17th.
Friday's a holiday.
Yeah, that's right, Good Friday.
So the 17th is the publication date, so it will be in that issue.
We'll be in the publication date of the 17th.
Okay, so that's before.
Yep. That's our target, we'll try and get that. And to Mike's question, yeah, we do have, I mean, Joe, I'm sorry. Counselor Fawn, to the question of technology and the conference call numbers, yes. We can set that up and be able to handle calls, I believe. We should be able to do that. So I guess to back, you know, the process through, if you want to continue to explore the possibility of a referendum, what that referendum would look like? Whether you want to explore the modified option of drive-through?
Is that truly an option, Mike? That's the only possibility we've got, from what Lisa said.
Here, Tommy, the buildings are all closed.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the option is, I mean, if you're focused on a participation and vote, I'm open to ideas, but I'm just looking at the one that Vernon, that popped up. And if there's some way to allow participation, and I'm not sure there's any other way with the conditions that we have with social distancing, I don't know. I mean.
Is it possible to wait till next week, Mike, to see if we get any more guidance about what the governor's saying in terms of things being closed and whatever?
We could, but I think it's, and we may have to, but just, you know. It's a timing in terms of planning. We lose, we lose time in terms of planning. We'll just have to plan simultaneously and go down that road and try to see if we can pull it off. But if the governor says we can't, or says something else, we can proceed on a parallel track, I guess.
I certainly don't want to be another Wisconsin and risk people's lives to let them vote. I frankly think the Vernon example is what we should be trying to follow. If anybody else has another idea, great, but I don't, I can't think of one.
Mike, if I could just chime in, I'm hearing some guidance is coming from the state. That's what we were told. But if you like, we have a dedicated email line that we can send to the Department of Public Health. So if you want to structure a question, I can send it and then it goes to the Department of Public Health and the Governor's Task Force. And maybe they'll give us a little bit more of guidance and an answer.
Okay, sure, I'll take advantage of that. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
I think we should definitely make a decision by next week's meeting, but kind of give us a little time to think about it and see once and, but decide by next, by next meeting.
Yeah, so for the.
Still have five weeks before it would happen, so.
Yeah, I mean, the only other alternative, you know, if you're not having participation is just, just to proceed with, you know, as, as the executive order allows you to do without participation. But we'll, we'll put our heads together on this end and see what we can come up with.
Is it possible to have more than one option?
Why?
Like, for instance, drive-through or email?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any provision for email, Lisa, none, none.
Okay.
Yeah.
Problem with email is authenticating the vote.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Lisa jump in.
Can I ask a question? If you were to invoke the Governor's Executive Order whereby you would have a, I would still say have a public hearing, but if you would pass the budget without a budget referendum, but it would give you more time and maybe keep your public hearing open and give the public multiple days to give you public comments on what they feel about the budget? And you can keep the budget sessions open and continue to work on the budget and then pass it that way with their public input? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, but they're, they don't know, because we don't know where the budget's gonna end up. So they're just, their comments are based on what's presented, what we start with.
Right, right, but then you can continue that conversation going forward by having your budget sessions and letting them continue to comment until you get to your final number.
Well, we can't adopt a budget or a proposed budget and have people continue to comment rather than vote. It just doesn't work.
Right.
No, but I meant to continue sessions and get some input, do it multiple times, and then just pass the budget with your final budget.
It's a cram-down, then, without public input and no possibility of a referendum.
He wants a public opportunity to vote.
Participation, for public participation, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I know, I mean, personally, I know the governor has an executive order that says that we can do that. I don't think it's right that it's, that it's just up to the nine of us. And, and so that's, that's why I'm in favor of doing something.
That's fine, you guys.
I'm just saying, this is what we decided.
We'll need a lot of help to pull this off. I'm alone in the office, so. I need the help. I need workers.
People that are, for, for, from home, come in and work in the office.
I mean, those that are working at home, can they help assemble stuff?
Yeah, we're.
Anybody?
Yeah, I mean, this is, right, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at every idea, every, every, you know, different nuance that we can to try and pull this off. And we'll begin planning right away after tonight and see what we can come up with.
So Lisa said she's all by herself. What, where's the assistant clerk?
She, they were, they were, until today or this week, were working alternate schedules, but there's, there's some health issues there. So we're trying to, we're trying to reduce the risk and keep them separate so that the, so that they're not catching the virus and keeping the office open. But I think there's some other resources we'll take a look at and try to tap with respect to other part-timers and other personnel that we can try and use.
I mean, is, is, whatever has to be prepared for both the primary and the referendum, is there stuff that can be done at home?
I don't think so, but.
No. No, first of all, I don't have the supplies, so we're, we, I have permission. Anticipating, you wanted to move forward to try and get regular envelopes and no inner envelopes. I'll do a certification page, which we've done for military. And then the people would have to mail it back, but it is a two-step process. They have to apply for an application. They need a signed application back first, which they can download. We have the link on the town website to the Secretary of State's website. There are other people that will call, and we have to mail the applications once we get that back. And then there are the packets, so-called packets, that I usually get from Secretary of State's office. They're telling us they're gonna be drop shipped to us for the primary. We haven't received anything.
By the way, I just got a flash on my iPad that the governor just signed an executive order on a new safe workplace rules for businesses. I don't know what that's all about, but it just flashed on my iPad.
So we can modify what we have to do for the ballots. But I don't even have the supplies to get everything ready. We have to find envelope, will Mike, you know, help me find envelopes and then prepare them, the packets. And then we have to, you know, have Atkins print the ballots. And I would say, being that it's mail-in, and most people, what we're seeing is the number has increased tremendously when you do that. And then two weeks later, we need the other supplies if I get them in for the presidential primaries, which would be even, because we have two, we have a Democratic and Republican one in Connecticut. So we can, we can do it, we can try. I just need some personnel and I need some supplies to pull it off.
So if you had the supplies, can the work be done at home?
No.
Stuffing envelopes, whatever, that can't, you can't do that.
They don't, well, no, you're not supposed to have this, that, they have to be locked in the vault each night. You don't leave election supplies out to protect the integrity of the election referendum or primary. So no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't fly. And the reason, I don't, I don't want to say a public, I mean, Suzanne's daughter's a nurse. She works at Yale, and she does work on the COVID floor, and she goes home. So that's why we're keeping Suzanne away from Town Hall, just in case.
Yeah, well, we'll, again, we'll, we'll take it up and do the best we can to figure out a solution.
Yeah, I just need to get some work, because I know the registrars will help me.
Through referendum, what supplies do we need?
Envelopes and ballots, right now.
And getting a supply from the printer, getting, getting, getting an accurate, or trying to get a, I think you're probably gonna have to go with 80% of.
I'd go with 80%.
Voters, it means it's extraordinary, well above and beyond what we typically do. So it's about getting those supplies and then getting it to the printer and getting, getting it back.
I believe Attorney Marino, when he talked about Vernon doing it, I didn't think they had a ballot. I thought they just did a thumbs up.
The drive-through wasn't, yeah, it was just strictly drive-through. People stayed in their cars, the windows were up. At one station, you would, you know, show your driver's license. You wouldn't come out of your car. People, that would be like one tent that was set up. The checkers would check the name off. If they were registered voters, they would proceed to another area. And they'd do a vote with either a thumbs up, a thumbs down. In talking with the registrars, Marlene came up with an excellent idea because we have yes or we have no too high, no too low. Maybe use a one, two, and three finger response. You know, one thumbs up is you approve it, maybe a two finger is no, it's too high, and three fingers, no, it's too low. And then I came up with maybe what I would like to do is have. And then I came up with maybe what I would like to do is have just a piece of paper that had the yes or the no.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys. I'm losing you.
Okay.
Come closer.
Yeah, I'll step away.
But in addition to that, I would like to have a piece of paper that our workers have. So if somebody puts a thumbs up and says yes, we have a piece of paper that says they voted yes, I approve the budget, and we stick it in a tabulator that doesn't count it, but that it's hold there. And the voter can see their vote was cast. We do the same with no, it's too high, no, it's too low. And we'd have three of like the tabulators not working because we would make up our own yes, no, no. And then they can be counted at the end by the workers. They'd have to be a hand count. But at least there's no interaction between the voter and the workers. We can keep them both safe.
I think if we're gonna do it, the only way to do it is that way, the windows will pop up and you can just communicate, it'll, it's for the safety of everybody taking the votes and, you know, how many questions there are, whether there's two or three or whatever, it's fine. But I think if we're gonna do it, that type of through-the-window thing is probably the safest for everybody.
And by doing it that way, Lisa's, is limited, limited supplies, right?
Yes. We could, like I said, I, I still would like to have some sort of paper trail, so it was my idea. I mean, in Vernon, they simply used the thumbs up, thumbs down, but it was a bonding resolution. I think it was a project. And to be honest with you, they only had 60 people show up. I think we would have more for a budget referendum. I would hope we would. But I would like to just take, just like a basic piece of paper like this and just put either a yes, I approve the budget, no, it's too high, no, it's too low. If somebody gave a thumbs up, we would hold up the paper, they would see what their vote was and actually watch the worker place it in a tabulator. But that would be something we could make up here, not have a, an actual ballot that we'd need a printer to print. I could make them on my computer on a copy machine.
Is there any legal reason we cannot do it?
Do, the drive-up?
Yeah.
No.
The way you're describing it, the way you're describing it with the-
No, no, we, Vernon did it, that was allowed, we could do that.
Okay.
But, see, we're having a problem because the workers don't wanna work either, and I can't blame them. They're, they're afraid, as they should be. But if we keep everybody in their car with the window up and we keep the workers away and provide them at least with masks and gloves just in case. But we'd have to have everything distanced.
Lisa, do we have the option of going with just one polling place?
We do, which is what I would suggest for that. They can even do that for the presidential primaries, which I don't think we'll do, but I'm not sure at this point. We just had a, a call with the Secretary of State's office and the Governor's office this afternoon. And it looks like the presidential primaries will probably be all paper ballots, which is what we're trying to get supplies for. But that's why we were thinking, I mean, if we're on the drive-through, is the location of MBIS and possibly where the auditorium is. So if they come in by the MBS side and in that parking lot we set up, that's where they check in. And if they're voters, then they would proceed to the auditorium, to another spot where they would actually do their votes, you know, with their fingers or how we do it, and then cast them there. And we'd have the election workers put the paper in the ta, in each tabulator. But showing the person that this is what you're voting, this is what's going in, and then the next person. We, you have to distance it, so we'd have to put up some markers, but-
You have a problem with that? Can't people come from both directions?
No, they can't come, they have to come in.
I know what I'm saying is-
They would have to come in, we'd have to block, they'd have to, we, we probably would need police, yes, so that they wouldn't do that. Because what, the, the concept is if they come in the Route 80 side, if they are voters, they proceed to say like where the auditorium is, cast their vote and go out that way. If they're not, we would want them to turn around and go back out Route 80.
Right.
You know, similar to what you do in the polls.
Right.
But we can work on that process and refine it a little bit more. But that's what the registrars and I tried to come up with last week in anticipation.
So that's the best option right now, right? As of right now?
I think so, unless somebody has a better idea. The idea is to allow the participation, but to protect both sides, the elector and the workers. And then you wouldn't have to worry about sanitizing polling places. Are there any other questions?
Do we need to make a decision tonight?
Yeah, the, the, the press release for Totaka Times needs to go out this week. I mean, if you weren't doing, if you weren't doing with the, the polling places and with ballots per se, you know, that, you, you would have more time to think about it. The problem is if you go past this week, it's, it'll be difficult to go back and do a budget referendum where they actually vote with the ballots and at the polling places.
This is Councilmember Goode. I'm kinda asking everybody, what do you think? Should we just kinda go with that or what?
Yes.
I agree.
The drive-through, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because then I wouldn't need to print the abs, you know, I wouldn't need three weeks to print an absentee ballot.
Yeah.
I can do one from, from my office like I've done in the past. That would have to be hand-counted for those people who can't, you know, are disabled people or people at Evergreen Woods.
So why don't we just kinda wrap it up and go for it tonight, then say yes on it?
Do we need to make a motion?
Do you want your spot back?
Do we? Hello?
Someone's, um-
Can everybody hear me?
Having interference. I can barely hear a thing. It's, it's-
I can't hear anything.
Microphones problematic.
Somebody's tapping on their desk or something.
Mike Paulus.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I lost Mike.
It's, it's Ron, it could be, Ron, say, go back to Ron.
Here you are.
Ron, can you move? Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you, Ron.
Everyone except for councils should have their microphones off.
I'm trying to scroll. Can you hear me now, Mike?
Yeah, but it's a lot of feedback. If that's Ron, that's a lot of feedback. Yeah, I, I think it might have been Counsel Polizia's audio.
Yeah, it's clearer now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what I heard-
So Ron, your, your audio is giving a lot of feedback. Thank you.
So what I heard was that Counsel Angeloni moved. I didn't hear a second, and, and that's pretty much all I heard.
I'll second it, Walter Goode.
Okay.
All right, but, but let, let's get Lisa's comment on the motion so that we tailor it to what she needs.
That's perfect.
Okay, you're trying to make a motion to, for the process for the budget referendum, Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
That is workable for you as town clerk.
Well, and the registrars and the residents, that's what we're trying to do. The motion you would need to do is to approve the process to hold a budget referendum by drive-through as opposed to going to the polling places and voting in person.
At one loc-
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna find out for Vernon how they eliminated the ballot because they only had the drive-through. And I had the registrars contact Vernon, but they didn't bring that piece back to me. I don't wanna exclude anyone. I don't know if we can do a partial absentee ballot for those that are in Evergreen Woods or disabled people or people who are too sick to come out and actually get in a car and vote. I don't wanna exclude those people.
You want me to look to see if Vernon has their minutes up and if we can see how they word it?
Sure, if you can do that quickly.
Let me try, yep.
Okay.
Well, we can always come back to this.
Mm-hmm, you can come back to the vote.
Concerns are, Lisa, the weather.
Yeah, and the weather is a concern too, if it should rain. But if we could, we'd have to put up tents and we would need some sort of lighting. I know Vernon, they use flashlights, but-
Hopefully it's a warm day.
Yeah. I know in Vernon they had some flashlights, but I think Fran has those, those towers. Fran has light towers that we could probably use, and it would be great because we'll only use that one location. Well, we'd have to-
So if there are locusts and flying frogs, or should we start talking about a different motion? Let me see what I can find here.
Okay. Oh, okay, Bill Seward said the fire department can provide light too. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Or whether it might be possible to use the, the drive-through at the high school with the, you know, the overhang there?
Right.
Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing yet, I've still posted from that meeting that I can find.
Okay, I, the registrars did speak to the registrars in Vernon last week, but they didn't mention anything about absentees.
Yeah.
Why don't we adopt the procedure for onsite voting and give Lisa the discretion to adopt any necessary procedure for absentee ballots consistent with whatever the state allows and has been done in other municipalities success.
Okay. That's fine.
Good idea. That sounds good, Joe.
Okay, one-
I'll second that.
A little bit more slowly, please?
So.
To approve the process to hold the budget referendum by drive-through as opposed to going in person?
To a polling place.
Where the town clerk would adopt such procedures for absentee ballots as are authorized by the state of Connecticut and have or have been adopted and used by any other municipalities successfully.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
I'm actually listening to the Vernon, the city of Vernon right now. They're not getting to it, so I apologize that it's not going quickly enough.
Okay, so did we, um-
So we have to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, with all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thanks.
So, so Mike, in regards to the whole budget process, is there any way by the time we start our actual discussions and working on the budget, is there anything from the departments about any possible savings that they may come up with? You know, all department. You know, Franny might have extra money because they didn't have as many plowable events this year. And I know there's the whole thing with FEMA and we're a disaster area and there's extra costs in regards to that. But is there any way we can get any kind of idea from all of the departments, which includes the Board of Ad, as to any possible savings in the current year's budget?
Yeah, we're, we'll continue to, I've had that discussion with Anthony, talking about just in, in broad terms. And we're gonna get to the level where we have a department head meeting tomorrow morning. I'll add that to the, to the agenda and begin that process of identifying. But I, I'm not, you know, that can be done. It's not, we'll, we'll get there. I just, I'm, I'm not sure if the, how, how far the council wants to go or if there's a target, I guess is what, what I'm looking for in terms of guidance on, on the budget as we go through this process. As I said before at previous meetings, if you're looking at a, a, a flat budget or zero budget, then we, we've gotta do more than just look at savings. But maybe you wanna go in gradual steps through this process? I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm, I'm open to hearing how you wanna handle this.
Well, I, I noticed in our budget book, the big black one, there was nothing on capital in there. Was that by design?
Uh, no, I think we-
That page should be there.
Yeah, it should be one page in the back at the end.
I, I, there was nothing in my book.
There's no, nothing in any of the books. We checked last night.
Okay, we'll get those right out to you.
And, and I don't know if there's been any adjustments done on the budget in regards to, you know, this is, this is an extraordinary time for everyone as far as jobs, you know, layoff furloughs, if they're getting paid, whatever. Our tax collection rate might not be what it is that was when the budget was originally established.
Correct.
Have there been any thoughts of adjusting some of the budgets? Or are you coming to us with all of those suggestions when we start working on the budget?
That's what we're working on internally, yeah. Anthony and I have had those discussions. We raised the issue on, on exactly that, on where our, where our tax collection rate is, where, you know, what if there's a, and a change to the state revenue? Obviously, we have close to 25% or more coming from the state. Those are big numbers. So there's, there's, there's no way of knowing what the state's gonna do, but if their collection starts to drop and their revenue starts to drop, are they gonna pass that on to the municipalities? I don't know. My sense is that they probably will. Where does that leave us, like you said, in terms of our collection rate? There's a lot of variables and we're gonna try and line up opportunities in which we can save, save money, look at savings, look at opportunities to pull back on, on, you know, across the board, just looking at every, everything that we can look at.
The other thing is on this, the FEMA reimbursement, and we get 75% of that, are salaries included in that of people that are furloughed or anything like that? Is any of that part of the expenses?
Uh, good question. I don't know the answer to that. I-
Typically additional cost, you'll probably go overtime.
Yeah, so traditionally, again, this is just a past experience, so they have not done that. They've only done on, on overtime and other, other expenditures. But I don't know that they may. There's gonna be a call, I believe, either tomorrow or Thursday that Jim Buck is going to be on, and maybe Anthony and myself will have to join that in terms of getting guidance for those applications. So there might be more guidance coming tomorrow or Thursday.
And nothing has come out from the state, from the Governor's office as far as, to municipalities about, you know, if you're, if you're paying your employees, is there any reimbursement like there is to small businesses through these PPP programs that came out to small businesses? Is there anything on the government's side?
Not, not that I've heard.
Okay.
Are there any town employees that have been furloughed?
Just the, the part-timers have, have been, but- Just the part-timers have been, but that's about 12, 12, I believe, on the library staff and two on the rec department.
So they got laid off?
Yeah, they were. They were, well, there's no hours for them, right?
So are they being paid or not paid?
No, they're not being paid. What we're, what we have done is to create a sick leave bank or a paid time off bank that's being donated from other employees to help with those employees. And that was a short-term measure, and we think it can help, but we don't know how long this is going to last.
All right, did they file for unemployment? Or did you give them paperwork to file for unemployment?
They, I don't think they have unemployment papers at this point. I'll check with them.
If I can speak for the recreation department, those that were furloughed from the rec department don't, currently, as far as I know, don't have enough hours to be qualified to get unemployment.
Okay.
So there's a minimum number of hours that you must have worked in order to qualify for unemployment, and they have not met those.
Okay.
They've all been there for that short of a period of time?
It's the number of hours they were-
Or the amount of hours per week?
Yes.
So how many people are not working but being paid?
Well, we're having, have to go through that, I don't have a final number. Everyone that we have on the payroll is working in some fashion at home, entering phones, entering emails to some degree, and that's what tomorrow's meeting is about, the assessment with department heads in terms of caseload and workload and what they're doing.
So I think as Rose asked in the beginning, talked about, you know, is there any savings from different departments? And, you know, all the departments in the town, because all the towns operate on taxpayer dollars. Board of Ed, Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, Town Hall, right? Everybody, we all have a stake in this. And then you had commented that, do you want it, you know, in pieces? In savings and in different ways you might look at trying to achieve gains? I think it's a step at a time. You know, that, you know, it should be laid out. This is what we think, we're going to have savings from this current year, and these are the changes we can make for the upcoming year to try to gain, to make some gains. I think you need to present it in such a way so it's understandable.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything? Okay. Next item? H, Board of Ed?
Tom, before we go that far, you get something from the school system? Are there non-union employees working, getting paid, or are they going on furlough, or it's too early to decide that?
Who's that question to, Mike?
Somebody from the Board of Ed or the superintendent?
His microphone is off.
He needs help on muting. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to send, Anthony's on his way to unmute them, and we'll get comment from Scott. There he is.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, we, I just came off mute. Could you repeat the question, was it, are there any employees that are furloughed at this time?
Yes.
No, so per the governor's order, we have retained all of our staff employees, they are all currently working. We've gone through split shifts in the week, but all bargaining units are working. All hourly people were retained as well, per the governor's recommendation.
Is that for the rest of the school year, Scott, or is that-
We don't know the length of the school year yet, we're going to hear Thursday at 3 o'clock what the school year will be. You've got to understand, if you start laying people off and then you're paying unemployment through the summertime, you're going to incur a cost that could exceed what would be to pay them for the last couple of months.
All right, so all your coaching positions and your refs and-
No, so spring sports have not been determined yet by the CIIC. They're looking at the potential of moving that to the summer months, potentially doing something in late June, July, and August. So if they were to do that, we obviously would have coaching stipends to pay. If they did not do that, we then would have potentially 15 or so stipends that we would retain and have. We don't pay a great deal for our coaching staff, so you can average that anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 or 5,000 per stipend. We would save a little bit in transportation costs, but we just don't know where that stands right now with what they're going to do with the spring. We feel pretty confident that we're not going to be going back on April 20th, and nor do we think that we'll be going back anytime soon after that.
Transportation, Scott, what's happening there?
The governor came out with the same executive order to maintain your contractual obligations with your transportation. So we're-
Are we paying that bill?
We are, we prepaid that bill.
So there's no cost savings coming back, then?
Late buses, field trips, anything that would be above and beyond the daily operations of our, you know, timeframe for getting kids to and from their regular school day.
Okay. We pay, we pay the bus contract upfront?
Yes, we did this year, yep. It was a 10% savings doing that way.
So what's our, what's the, what's the cost of our bus contract approximately?
Two million?
Yeah.
I can tell you. We're looking for that right now, Tom.
Well, just a rough number.
Roughly two.
So that, so we saved 200,000 by paying upfront?
What do we save? What was the 10%? So it was, it was not 10% with the correction, it was around 29,000 that we saved.
So about 1%, right?
Yeah.
One and a half percent?
Yes. Martha Vaughn is here, we're just, as you're asking questions, we're going back and forth. So it was a 29,000 savings by paying upfront.
Wow.
Scott? Scott?
Yes, I'm trying to find out who's asking the question.
It's Carolyn Candelora. Should we try to get our lawyers involved to see if we could get some money back? Because we are paying for 180 days in which we're not getting.
The CASBO is-
Money back from-
Bus company.
Transportation speaking to?
Yes.
CASBO is working on something with that, Martha's been working with-
Districts, we're doing it together.
They're doing that together as we speak through CASBO, the group of business managers around the state, so they will go back on that now.
Okay, because we're not paying for gas, like we're not getting what our contracts have supposed to be able to-
Right, we pay fuel separately as well, that goes out to a consortium for bidding and pricing. But Martha's working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're kind of, I guess we're into our budget presentation, Mike Paulus, is that?
Tom or-
Do you want to roll right into it? Do you have the PowerPoint that you're going to put on?
Yes, I'm going to, I have the PowerPoint loaded, and if the deputy mayor is ready, we'll load that up and go share on the main screen. Tom, you ready?
Yep. Mike, I can't see that, just tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, it's going to take, it's going to take a minute for me to get through and load up.
So, Tom, speaking to your question before about staffing personnel, there was a district in Connecticut that laid off, I believe, 14 employees prior to the governor's executive order. They were 10-month secretary positions and other positions, but then they had to go back and rehire them after the fact, when that came out. So, you know, it-
That's why, Scott, we were praying for a big savings, but you're disappointing us.
I'm sorry, Michael, I wish, you know, one, I wish we were never having this conversation, obviously. These are uncharted waters and times that, you know, there is the Section 10248-K that allows us to retain up to 2% of the current appropriations for this year, and that might be something that as we get further into this, and as we know, along the time we get into May, if there's any cost savings from this year that we then could, you know, set aside, we just have to be careful with that, with how we spend that, because if it's a hole that we dig, we know the following year we're going to have to pull it back in. So, you know, that's something that we'll keep out there as we start the conversations. I'm really not going to go through and read all of this to you. You have it in front of you, you received copies of the budget probably six weeks ago, so, Mike, if you want to start clicking along, I'm not going to go through our vision and mission. You obviously can take the time to go through that and have a little better understanding of our beliefs and what we're attempting to do. Our priorities are listed there with what was built into this budget. The administrative team and the Board of Ed worked collaboratively and spent a lot of time coming up with their vision for keeping with our strategic plan and making sure that the district is moving forward in these challenging times. You can click ahead, Michael. They're listed there. Again, class size, backwards, I'll give you a cue, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you. Class sizes at all, I got you, class sizes at all level, and they're varied throughout the district based upon, it could be an AP course running with eight to 10 kids, or a mainstream English course with 25 students, so it's varied with the learning needs of the children and the leveling, especially as you get towards the middle and high school. We have a joint schedule for the high school and middle school this year. We're really excited about the ability to share staff, we'll be starting and ending the day at the same time. We're sharing busing, we've done that for several years now. So what we're looking to do is have teachers go over the bridge, so to speak, and be able to work between two buildings, will make us more efficient, more cost-effective. Mike, you're all over the place on the clicker.
Yeah, no, no, it's, I apologize.
All right, I'm quick, I'm not big with it. And then extracurricular activities and obviously athletics, so, Michael, you alluded to that before with, you know, we really have a rich, robust offering for a small school district. We give our kids wonderful opportunities, you know, so we're looking to continue to support those efforts. So moving forward now, Mike, cue? Click? Okay, the total budget for 2021, you see the $33,144,863. Budget last year at the $32,185,714, difference of $9,592,49, which equates to a 2.98% increase. Martha Vaughn is sitting here with me right now, but this is a new format. Board, excuse me, council members that have been here for several years, you'll recognize that this document is streamlined down, it's the down and dirty, the numbers, and specific information that we think is helpful to, for you to kind of navigate through. So 2.98. Moving forward. We, this is the part that I'm going to just speak to quickly, but all salaries, budget reflects actual employees in current positions, all benefits to ensure accurate allocations, calculations, utility, budget, everything was weighed into this, measured, and evaluated. We made significant savings by recently swapping out our copy machine lease and went with a different vendor. We reviewed our transportation contract and expenditures, we obtained estimates on all property and liability policies, reviewed all telephone, cell phone, internet, postage lines, and expenditures every year to date. Okay? Enrollment projections, if you want to scroll up a little, Michael, there's really not a great change in our projected enrollment for next year, it's down 15 students. So if you're looking at a pre-K through 12 program, where it's about one student per grade level for our pre-K through 12 continuum, we're leveling out, we see our enrollment leveling over the last three or four years, it's kind of flatlined. We're looking at our K enrollment right now, and I believe it's just over 100 students at this point. I don't have that exact number to date, but we're guesstimating with the summer enrollment as well to be around 120 to 125 students for our kindergarten enrollment. Okay? So this is the breakdown of the budget in a summary for the $33,144. If you look at salary equating to 57%, going all the way down. Tuition would be out of district, special education, tuition costs and transportation required if it's a day program. Everything that you would need to know going into the makeup of 100% of that budget. This will break it out, well. Mike, did you want to go back, or did you not want to see that slide? The last one?
Use your arrows up instead, maybe. No, I won't, it won't, I'm trying to use the arrows, it won't work.
Page up, page down?
Yeah, so you want this one or the next one?
What was it, oh, you went past, it was the pie chart, what was the next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the pie chart.
Okay, so the pie chart.
So it just breaks it out by percentile of, obviously, salary making up a lion's share of our total proposed budget.
Benefits, obviously, the second largest piece of the pie. Going on from there, okay? Here's the expenditures broken out by location, by building. Obviously, the biggest one being the-
District.
District expenditures. Service that reaches beyond one building, people services, technology, transportation, benefits, insurance, and professional services are what makes up the district expenditures. The high school is always the largest of the four schools because of the sports and athletic programs and the, obviously, different courses that we run and staffing. Okay? So we always break out a status quo budget. This year, the board supported the recommendation for a new Spanish teacher at NBIS and for an increase in our Project Lead the Way program, looking at our youngest of learners, our K, pre-K through five. Project Lead the Way currently is at the high school, and it is moving down towards the middle school, where we're looking to have it become a K-12 initiative. So we were starting to implement with a $34,000 injection next year in costs with workbooks in the program. The Spanish textbooks are listed, digital textbooks for NBIS and social studies, AP Government, which is a new course of materials, new equipment, there was 29,000 there, and our software package, Alio, 25,000 for support and training. So if you were to summarize that column at 191,931 or .6 of that 2.98, our flatline budget for next year status quo is 2.38. Okay? This is something that we've been talking about for the last several years, and we've been looking to move language opportunities down as a full-year course into the middle- and we've been looking to move language opportunities down as a full-year course into the middle school. We were able to satisfy that last year with our eighth grade coming on as part of the wheel and having Spanish every day. We were looking to expand that down to seventh grade as well, so students would have two full years before entering high school and earn a credit in Spanish in their freshman year, moving into the high school with one credit. Advanced placement offerings, we're really proud that we've been recognized on the national level as making the AP honor roll for several years for a small high school to have the number of AP courses, which are college preparatory courses that give credit with the passing of the assessment at the end of the year with a score of three or higher out of five potential points. Some of our students are able to go in and have up to a semester of college paid for by their successes in our AP program. So we were looking at U.S. government and politics and a writing course to kind of bolster what we're offering right now and continue to remain competitive as a secondary high school and preparing our students for post-high school experiences. Okay? Project Lead the Way, we spoke a little bit about that. I think if you look at what's happening around the country and when you see the strong push at the federal and state level for returning manufacturing back to the country, obviously, Project Lead the Way supports our initiative of trying to bring manufacturing back to our curriculum for the middle and high school and the more that we can expose our younger students to STEM activities and to get that embedded in their curriculum as early as possible, kindergarten all the way through. The Project Lead the Way would be a regular part of the science curriculum. The teachers go and get trained in the summertime. University of Haven is one of the support staffs that offers the training for our staff as well. So our high school, we have three certified Project Lead the Way teachers between the middle and high school. So we're able to offer a nearly full curriculum of Project Lead the Way, which really gives our students a great advantage in engineering and entering into college on graduation. Okay? So Luscious Math is a program that we're looking to add to Tuckett Valley and the high school. And it's more curriculum-based. Right? Our capital items, we've listed below, if you want to click on those. So at Tuckett Valley, we're constantly looking at abatement. Parking lots are in dire need of a facelift in all of the buildings. If you've been through there, you know, pulling into Tuckett, you didn't like your hands driving into that driveway. Jerome Harrison, the cooling tower and compressor, looking to work on a lighting upgrade. We did put in a grant with UI for the lower half of town, the North Branford side of town, for all of the buildings and looking to partner with the state for a grant. If we were able to get that, that would take care of three or four items on this list. There would be a minimal increase in our electric bill each year. It would be paid for with our cost savings. So we have to qualify for that and be approved for that. With everything going on in the state right now, obviously, with what we're dealing with, we're not sure any of these are going to be released for these types of projects. So we'll wait and see, but that certainly would take care of all of the lighting upgrades and the building management systems in all of the buildings at this end of town in North Branford. We talked about gas, piping to Middletown Avenue and Tuckett Valley and sharing that cost with the fire department, I think with the ambulance barn there and looking at the possibility of that. I don't know if there's any questions on any of the capital. I think most of you have seen these before and none of them are really new to you. Okay? And that should be it. So we'll open up. Mike, do you want to go back to?
Where, where do you want to go?
Oh, full screen, everyone. You can go back. You can show up the PowerPoint. Okay, we're back on. Mike, you can hear us. We're all set?
Yes, thank you, Scott. It's open.
Okay. So if there are any questions right now, as I mentioned before, Martha's here with me specific to the budget?
We're just, if you can hang on just a minute, we're checking the posts and checking the email for potential questions.
All parties that are on can hear me. Tom, can you hear me?
Yes.
You were sitting awfully still. I thought I lost you there. Okay.
We have no email questions.
It's a little muffled, Michael.
We do not have any questions via email.
No?
There's no questions via email, he said.
Oh, okay.
From the public. You're really hard to hear, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, he is.
I know you went to a new budget format this year, but the one that the council received, there's like no detail to it, so we can't tell what's in the accounts. And I know you're changing over to the uniform chart of accounts code, so there's a lot of accounts that are being moved around. But if there's any detail that we want as far as what includes, because I don't know what's included in some of these accounts in past years. We could tell what was in there?
If you can specifically request what you're looking for, we can get that to you.
Okay.
Before our workshops, you know, we're obviously going into Wednesday tomorrow, but, you know, we're still working over at Central Office. So if you get your questions specific to us by email, we'll get those prepared and get them back to you.
Okay.
I see you have something in there for $25,000 for training for your...
Alio?
Yeah, for Alio. What is that? Don't people know that now?
I'm going to let Martha speak to that. It's just, there's a lot of feedback on this.
Yes. So the additional funds would be to actually have the computer company come out and help us to set up this system, because unfortunately, the system was never set up correctly and it's not being used to its full potential. And then the other piece of that is to train both myself, the accountant at Central Office, and our staff. We've already trained specifically on a requisition and purchase order process, and we'd like to get additional training on payroll and bank reconciliations and an accounts receivable module that is in the system and has not been used.
Thank you.
Scott.
Hi, Tom.
So, you know, with the way, with the condition the world is in at the moment, not just North Branford, the entire world, is there any, is there any savings that we think we could, we could make, anything that we can make further within the Board of Education?
I don't know if you're talking about in this current year's budget or next year.
In the, in the, the budget for 2020, 21.
Well, so you're asking the question whether you think that we want to eliminate programs right now. We're going to look to the workshop to get feedback and guidance from you. You know we're at a 2.38 status quo moving forward with .6% for added programs and expenditures for next year that we currently do not have. So we're going to look for guidance from the board based upon our workshops with the council to have a better idea of what your thoughts are and what direction you're guiding us in.
Okay.
I think that's the fairest and most honest way to answer that. We're well aware of these unprecedented times. We understand that this is going to be a process that, once we get back to work, it's just not going to turn around. This is going to be something that is going to carry on for, you know, we don't know that. I don't even want to predict that, but we're certainly aware of that.
Okay.
You're really hard.
Who was that?
Your bandwidth, it's Ron. Your bandwidth is really low, Ron, and so you come in very mumbled. It's very hard to hear you. I keep getting a message on my screen that your bandwidth is very low. I don't know if that's interrelated to the issues that you're having.
Try it again, Ron. Can't hear Ron.
Yeah, can't hear him.
Ron, maybe you can type on the chat a question.
Or stand on one foot with the antenna over your head.
I just want to go back to the bus contract for this year and the executive order from the governor. The town attorney has been, of course, is on and is listening, and he has said that the executive order called for negotiations between the district and the bus company to accurately reflect the actual cost incurred during the duration of the public health. So is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
CAS?
CASBO.
CASBO?
Yes. So Martha is working directly with DACCO with other business managers, and I'm assuming they have their legal team with them for CASBO. And that's specifically what they're working with right now.
We felt it would be an easier negotiation to have all districts that were represented by each different bus company work together so that the bus companies weren't dealing with 166 towns. They were dealing with a group of districts who all, they all had contracts with.
Okay, so do you have any idea of how soon before you would have any inclination as to what is going to come of this?
I do not.
Okay.
Ron, did you send your question in? Mike, do you have his question?
I don't have, I can't see anything on chat. No, I don't have that.
Yeah, it's nothing on, he didn't do it on, did he put it on chat, Ron? Did you put it on chat?
I don't see anything on chat. Maybe, maybe he gets the mail.
I got Ron on this.
He's calling on his cell phone.
Go ahead, Ron. No fails.
Can everybody hear me now?
No.
Thanks. Under the capital, I just was curious about the financial system that's in there. I know the town was looking at a joint system between Town Hall and the Board of Education. Just curious as to why you guys are looking to go ahead with your own system.
We're not looking to go with our own. We're looking to combine with the town. And they've had several meetings to discuss the software and if it would be compatible. And they've had very good meetings to date, so we're looking at the same system.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Mike?
If you want to hang on, you could hang on.
Yeah, might as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Joanne, look that up on your...
Now I can't hear Mike.
Mike, you're muted.
Mike, you muted yourself, Mike.
I was sorry. I was talking to Ron.
Oh.
I didn't mean it for the general conversation.
Conversations, Mike. Anyone else? Like if, Juan, I appreciate your efforts. If that is the last question, putting this on tonight, this is a lot of hard work and patience to make this happen. I do want to commend the Board of Ed and the staff in short time, past three weeks. When you look at over 1,600 computers that are out in the community, including all staff, paraprofessionals, students from grades one through 12, and the work that they've been able to do in a short period of time, it speaks vying to the commitment to education in our community and the teamwork that has prevailed in these tough times. And I know that the parents appreciate our staff's efforts, and they really look forward to those connections of seeing their teachers and interacting with their classmates. That's one of the biggest things that we've seen over the three weeks, is that separation, that social, emotional peace where they're quarantined as well and they're not able to see their teachers and their friends. So I want to commend everyone for their efforts in making this happen. You got that, Mike Paulus?
All recorded, Scott. We got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, Scott. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Be safe.
Be safe. Everyone be safe. Board of Ed, if you want to click off, I think there'll be more clarity in their phone conversation without the eight of you on.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Take care. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.
Guys, too, please. Bye-bye.
All right.
Okay, next item, Fire Department.
Now I see Joe.
Are you actually outside?
See, that's one of the nice things about Zoom. You can set up your background, Walt.
There's leaves on the trees, Walt.
That's right.
Nice to be outside.
Okay, so before we start, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I was able to set up a camera on the desktop computer today in my office. So it makes it a little easier than using a laptop or iPad or an iPhone. So before we start, please understand the mission of the Fire Department. And unlike other budget presentations, this has been minimized with points of emphasis being provided you. So the mission of the Fire Department is to contribute within the appropriate authority, and again, that's established by town code and state statutes, to the maintenance and improvement of the quality of life for the citizens in the town of North Branford. And we administer this through fire suppression, fire prevention, inspection, investigation, providing EMS at a paramedic level through our citizenry, rescue operations, special operations, emergency management, and most importantly, the effective training and administration of these activities. And we do this as an all-hazards response department. Since 9/11, you'll hear fire departments classifying themselves as being able to respond to all hazards. And that's our primary focus. It takes a lot of ingenuity, takes a lot of tenacity, a lot of courage, and most importantly, it takes personnel to do this. So before we start the presentation, I got to remind you that you should have in your possession a copy of the fiscal year 1819 Executive Summary of Activity that provides you with supplemental information on the department's activity, types of calls, call statistics, training summation, new equipment that was put into effect, the department's fleet, and the organizational structure. So that is, again, supplemental information to what we're going to talk about tonight. And before we start and present the budget, and again, this is the Board of Fire Commissioner's budget, I'd like to call on the chairperson of the board. I'd like to call on the chairperson of the board, Eddie Purnair, to say a few words.
Everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ed.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I know every year that we ask, please do not cut our budget for one reason or another. I wish this year could be the same situation, but as you all know, we are in very difficult times. So if our budget, if our budget does get cut, I can tell you now, there is no way that we will be able to save what account we will be able to take the money from because we don't know which items we will need for now and in the future because we don't know what the future is going to bring. So I mean, if you do cut our budget and we have to take it from technical supplies or something and, and this happened again in September or October, I mean, if we don't have the masks and we don't have, you know, it is, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be ludicrous for us to lose any money at all. So I, myself and the Board of Fire Commissioners are pleading with you, please do not cut our budget because of the times that we are in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so uh you should have the PowerPoint presentation posted up in front of you and we'll, we'll move forward. So with regards to the, the fire operations budget, uh, you should have the spreadsheet in, in front of you. Uh, we'll go through the process and then go back and if you have any questions, we'll, we'll attempt to address them. Just keep in mind, please, that when we make decisions, and in this case, we're talking about fiduciary decisions, uh, they can be made either from a participatory perspective, they can be autocratic, or they can be democratic. Our budget allows for participation from the staff of the department, from company captains, from our members. So we have been playing catch-up since about 2006. And by that, I mean trying to make our department operate to the standards to which we are expected today. And as everybody knows, whether it's been a one-on-one discussion with me or um other budget presentations, what we ask for allows us to meet today's standards based upon NFPA, ISO, and OSHA. And that's really, really important. And somebody always says to me, listen, NFPA is a recommendation. Yeah, I, listen, I get it, but remember this, NFPA recommendations are used against you in a court of law. And that's so, so important today. So everything we do is predicated upon local, state, national standards, laws, and regulations. So uh as we move through throughout the next couple of slides, please keep that in the back of your mind. Uh, there's, there's a couple unknowns here. So the town council is well aware that they've established a finance subcommittee. And as we speak, the finance subcommittee has had meetings and have looked into a couple, in particular, pension and lease agreement items within the fire department's budget. So we haven't been provided with those numbers yet. I don't think they've been established to date. So again, those numbers don't reflect in the numbers that you have printed on the spreadsheets you have been provided with. So overall, I know it seems like a lot, but the overall increase to our budget is 12.14%. And the, the slide in front of you highlights personnel, materials and supplies, the contractual services, as well as the capital outlay, and the, the differences in, in each of those categories. So with respect to those categories, uh, next slide, please. I've provided you with a, with a summary of details related to the increase only. And keep in mind that as you move throughout the line item budget, you will see that in some areas there are cost savings. So in personnel, in line item 102 and 120, it reflects increases to part-time salary, stipends for command staff, as well as related costs to employer Medicare, Social Security, and Pension Plan. And it shows you that, that particular increase. For materials and supplies under line item 202, uh, it, it's more of a realistic number, and we, we say this every year, that we establish the budget based upon real-time facts and numbers. So it's the increases associated with actual need for supplies, and again, that, that number is shown there. One of the biggest areas that we deal with are those that fall under the contractual services section. Uh, so 310, costs related to significant increase in apparatus, equipment, and maintenance. And it's directly related to the age of the fleet and the cost of repairs. I can tell you this, in the current fiscal year, uh, I've been tracking on a regular basis and we've spent over $100,000, it's probably about $102,000 today, on apparatus maintenance for the fire and the ambulance side. That's a lot of money for apparatus repairs. So again, it's directly related to the age of the fleet. Included in this line item is the continuation of the replacement cycle for towers. It's dictated by federal DOT standards. So as I noted, the actual rental cost provided to the three companies, that is dictated by the lease agreement, worked out between the companies and the town manager, isn't unknown, so naturally without that number, it can't be calculated in there. Originally on 319, we had an increase of $2,500, but it was reduced to 2,000 uh and is now at $500 dollar increase from the fiscal year that we're operating in now. So increases are directly related to new mandated EMS training and officer online classes. So we don't have a say on how the state dicks, dictates, dictates training or how individuals have to acquire their continuing education. So we've looked at a number of different avenues and picked the most the most cost and wise-worthy option that's available to us. Again, a lot of what is done now is predicated upon the student and it's just, just like the educational process that the kids are experiencing now, doing a lot on their own and online. And that's a, that's a challenge for people, um, but there's a cost generated to that. So 320, cost increases are a result of mandated medical exams, testing of ground ladders, fire hose testing, computer software for management information system, area of breathing apparatus testing. And the other caveat is that in the lease agreement with the fire stations, uh, there's a line item that provides the town covering repairs in the fire station. And again, we don't know that actual number. Uh, one thing that we did put into the, the budget this year was email addresses from the town side for the company officers. It's always been something on the back of my mind as the fire chief that we continually depend upon our members to use their personal email addresses. And potentially, that's an FLI issue. So we're, we're looking at investing um some funds into specific email addresses through the town system for, for company officers. So again, in contractual services, provides you with that increase. Uh, capital outlay provides funding for the purchasing and replacement of safety equipment that becomes damaged or requires replacing due to functionality, and the, the specific items are listed there. Uh, one thing that we're working on this year with existing funds is NFPA requires our helmets, not only fire gear, but helmets as part of the detective ensemble to replace that a 10-year cycle. So we're using funds out of our core five account as we speak to, to start on that process. Again, it shows you what that includes. Next slide. So most fire departments that surround us that operate EMS, they don't separate their budgets like we do. Wallingford did. They started uh an enterprise account system and they switched back to their old system. So uh again, most EMS operations are contained within one operating budget in the, in the fire department. So ours is a little bit, little bit different. So operating with a separate, separate budget, again, following the same format for the fire department, it shows the, the various categories and the percentage increase. So for EMS operations, and this is really, really good. So where can, where can you find a community like ours that is operating a fire department with dedicated volunteers 24/7, staff in a cooperative and collaborative effort with an outside party, Vintec Management Services, who provide paramedic to us and provide paramedic transport service to our community for the cost of the general fund transfer to the operating budget for the ambulance. And that's, that's not an extensive amount. So with the ambulance operating budget, you're looking at a 3.37% increase. And uh again, the, the increases for each of the line items or categories, I should say, personnel, materials, and supplies, contractual, and capital are listed there. Next slide, please. So uh I kind of liked the way that our library director formatted some information. So uh she shared that information with me. And I think it was really important on the ambulance side to detail our, our financial request in this form. So again, under the personnel account, 102 covers the costs related to personnel, the costs for the fire chief to administer EMS on a part-time basis, our paper call payments for EMTs and paramedics, uh, for calls that they actually go to and calls that are transmitted, they get to the station, and they get canceled. As well as time our engineers spend making repairs to the ambulance uh instead of sending it out to our contracted vendor or to Public Works for a town mechanic to work on. So line 120 uh in that category is the pension and social security associated with payroll. So again, uh, the 148, 279 increases to 166, 966. Under materials and supplies, again, 202 provides uh funds for disposable and non-disposable medical supplies. And I won't even talk about what we're going through now. But we, we buy equipment that continues to be used and equipment that is used once and, and discarded. Uh, this also includes all equipment that is state-manded. And um certain times, as we are experiencing right now, our medical control provider, Yale Center for Emergency Medical Services, uh, requires us to provide certain medications on our units to administer to patients based upon a protocol change. And uh it's whatever they tell you, you've got to provide. Uh, funds also are there to support the operations of the LifePak 15s, cardiac monitors, and defibrillators with the associated cost difference in the two fiscal years. For contractual services, again, repair setting ambulance made by Public Works that we are billed through internally, repairs that are made by an outside vendor, EJ Bowden, located in town, as well as maintenance on regulated medical devices, such as the LifePak and the automated CPR device called the Lucas device. Line item 320 covers the costs related to contract labor, and this is what we pay Vintec for supplying paramedics, as well as our billing collection agency fees. And again, the cost in this fiscal year and forecasted for the next fiscal year. Uh, even though the line item is small, under 405, it provides us with the ability to purchase some, some technical equipment, although not, not very much. So on, on the bottom there, it shows you some captured information. In fiscal year 18, again, this is reflective in your executive summary. Uh, we responded to 1,822 calls for service, 76.72% for EMS. And provides you with the breakdown of medical and trauma, as well as the interventions. More than 50% of the calls require some type of intervention by, by your paramedics. It's interesting to note that in our management information system, we're able to capture calls that come in and then that second or third call comes in. So we call that overlapping incidents. And in uh the last fiscal year, there were 381 overlapping incidents. So what does that mean for us? It means that we have to tone out for a second or third car or depend upon our mutual aid partners or AMR to respond from a distant location into town, cover the transport, or even provide paramedic service uh to our, our patients. So uh of the, of the 995 billable transports, our collection rate was 91.69. And every year, we, we kind of talk about our payer mix. So from a healthcare standpoint, the, the payer mix is what type of insurance our, our transported patients have, whether it be Medicaid, Medicare, healthcare insurance, or some type of, some type of private insurance. So up on the screen, Medicare, uh, we transported 551 patients, represents over 50% of our clientele. Medicaid, 131.13. So, so here's the thought that you, you have to consider right now on, on April 7, amidst pandemic. So 68% of our patients that we transport to the hospital fall under Medicaid or Medicare. So what does that tell you? Tells you the age of the population. So when we look at COVID-19, we know the history, we know the information that's being transmitted to us about what are the age categories of people that are requiring hospitalization. We know the age categories of what we were being told of those that are succumbing from COVID-19. And that should give you some type of grasp on our population in town. So again, that's, that's the clientele that we service. 22% have medical insurance and 92 have uh some level of private insurance. I can tell you this, uh, on a weekly basis, one of the things that I have to do is I, I, I get a printout from our ambulance billing vendor with bills that have been sent out. They have to be reviewed within a specific timeline and there's a process of evaluating payment. So if they, if they haven't responded to the bill, our contract with our ambulance billing service allows for up to three bills to be sent. So what are you doing in the meantime? So you have the option of sending it by, by way of a letter and notice that they haven't responded. If they haven't responded after a letter, my recommendation, it goes to a collection agency. And there's some cases in which there's no family left, the patient may be deceased, the address has changed, the patient has moved away, and there's no way to track the individual. So that money due to the town for the services that we provided get what we call written off. So if we were a wealthy community and we collected, and, and I can't go through this every year, we collected all that was due, even at the amounts that Medicaid, Medicare, and some insurance companies pay for transport, uh, we'd be in really good shape to operate our fire service. But it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that for any EMS service, especially in this area. So uh, so again, when we look at what we take in and the subsidy that's transferred from the general fund to the operating fund for the fire department for the next fiscal year, uh, we're requesting $200,000. So that, that tells you that we can provide EMS at the paramedic transport level for $200,000. That's pretty cost-effective. And again, um, I know there may be some viewers with their pictures blocking the right-hand side of the slide, or it may be visible. Uh, just, just look at the dollar in repairs that we're doing to the, the ambulance. Just look at the dollar in repairs that we're doing to the, the ambulances this year. And again, the bottom component reflects the number of responses by our three ambulances. And again, at the bottom of the slide, we, we put it, we put a strong emphasis on this. What we do is state mandated. In order to provide the level of service, we're guided by local policies, procedures and protocols from our medical control, Dr. Daniel Joseph. So, to be in this business, this is what we're up against. So I think for the dollars that this town spends on providing EMS, we do a really, really good job. We have excellent EMS personnel, both from the department and from Vintec. And they do a great service for our community. So, with respects to the cost of providing EMS, transfer of general funds to $200,000 outside of what we collect to make up the difference, that's pretty darn good. Next slide. I hear from previous information that you may not have this in your packet. So, again, as part of our budget annually, as recommended by the Board of Fire Commissioners, is our capital improvement projects separated out into two categories. In the fire department, the request or the replacement of our airbag system, we call those pneumatic rescue bags. And each of the prices are, are placed after these points. The continuation of replacement protective clothing for firefighters, replacement of fire chief's vehicle, installation of mobile repeaters in nine vehicles to improve our, our radio system. And I'll go back to that in a second. And then continue with the replacement of SCBA cylinders that again, will become out of date next year. So, the personal protective equipment program and the SCBA cylinders becomes a work in progress over the last couple of years. And this is a continuum. So to talk quickly about the VHF mobile repeater system. So because of the, the, again, it goes back to the, the long history of communication problems in town and the, and the frequency that we operate on and the lack of an intact and fully functional communication system. And in light of what potentially could be a project down the road, we're suggesting that we put VHF mobile repeaters in the vehicle.
They decided to put my stuff.
So, so basically what that does is you have personnel on scene. They talk from their portable radio. The message goes to the mobile repeater and is rebroadcast. So, portable radio at five watts, back to the vehicle at 40, 45 watts, back to communications, and the reverse takes place. So again, it, it provides us with a more secure way of communicating. Kind of a little aside, I've recently applied for an assistance to firefighters grant program to replace all our portable radios. And the replacement radio that I'm requesting is a, a multi-band radio. The nice thing about that is if we stay with our current VHF system or we move into a UHF or an 800 megahertz system, we don't have to change radios after that. So again, that's part of the assistance to firefighters grant program for 2019. We actually have a conference call tomorrow with FEMA to provide us with some updated information as, as how they're going to review the applications. Because their process will be compromised with large groups being gathered together in a single room. So we'll know better. The downside is that the AFG awards could take eight, nine, 10 months. But still, there's the possibility of, of that being received by the town. On the ambulance side for capital improvements, and again, these are recommended by the Board of Fire Commissioners. But if we look at the construction of the ambulance building, we're, and this is a placeholder. So approximately 65,000 for new roof shingles on Station 4. And there's about $15,000 on ground repairs. That actually has, a lot has already taken place and will be, will be continuing. So again, that is the CIP as recommended by the Board of Fire Commissioners. Next slide. So, the last component is the equipment reserve. And I'm not sure if you have a copy of this as well. And again, it provides you with the information as far as the lease payments for the vehicle that is being hopefully contracted very soon. And that's a replacement for engine three, that's an $800,000 fire apparatus. And the Board of Fire Commissioners is suggesting that we start the process to replace Tower One and look at replacing one of the ambulances. So that would be for the upcoming fiscal year. And again, typically, that lease payment process is spread out over a number of years. So that's what you have in, in front of you. Next slide. That, that provides you with a snapshot of the fire department's proposed budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. Listen, I, I truly know because the boots-on-the-ground personnel, and that's members of the fire department, are responding to those types of calls that are creating the economic and social situation that we're experiencing today. Volunteers are continually responding to calls without hesitation. They're doing so with the fact in mind. They may contract a disease, they may be injured. In the back of their mind, they're wondering today, what will workers accomplish for me? They're wondering today, will we have enough PPE to continue forward? I know there's some statistics that just came out tonight about the possibility of a number decreasing. It's pretty difficult to forecast. So, with that, with that fact in mind, we need to continue to move forward. Our responsibility, our role hasn't changed one single bit. As a matter of fact, it's taxed us even more. And we're, we're trying to deal with that in the sense that we don't diminish the service. I know there's the thought process of budgets being cut from listening to other departments' budget presentations. And if a cut is going to be made, make the dollar amount. And the board is going to have to make that determination. Is it going to affect the fire department's operation? Operationally, it probably will. It will probably affect the way we provide service to this community. So, so with that said, on behalf of the men and women of the North Ramford Fire Department, our partners with Vintec Management Services, men and women that support us every day in our community from dispatch, Public Works, the police department, we have each other's backs. And this is a very difficult situation that we're responding to today. So, if there's any questions, I know there's a few commissioners on the conference call. Deputy Chief Anthony Cieto, I'm sure he's got his laptop open. So if there's any specific questions, we can address them at your leisure or you can send them to us by way of email. So I thank you for listening. And if there's any questions, I'll open it up.
Chief, how often do you have to change firefighters' gear, individual gear?
Marie, 10 years.
10 years?
Yep. Yeah, so, so it's on a cycle. So, we're actually, we're actually in good shape after this year. So, we have about 20, if, if everything holds true and the members are still there, we have about 26 members that fall into the upcoming cycle. And a set of years, about $2,500. So, we would actually complete our, our PPE program this year. So, we're going to be in good shape after that.
So with that in mind, that you have the budget that would complete the program for a while?
Yeah, so we, we have $60,000 right now that we completed spending. So that helped us out this year. I used 405 account last year. Kind of looking at, at numbers as we closed out the year. So again, that, that helped us out as well. So, predicated upon the CIP being afforded to us, we're going to be in good shape. And the same thing holds true for, for tires. You know, that, that kind of falls into that, that maintenance line item. So, we're, we're on track with that as well.
Thank you.
Yep. So, just, just as a kind of last point of information, under the fire department, there's no new projects on the horizon. And from EMS, there's, there's a move towards altering the type of epinephrine we give patients that may be suffering common allergic reaction that would actually decrease our overall cost. And the same thing holds true for testing individuals that may be a diabetic or unconscious for an unknown reason, taking their blood sample and testing their glucose level. So again, as I mentioned before, there's, there's an added cost this year because of state mandated changes in EMS training. So other than that, there's no other new programs for EMS. So, just as a, one last word, we work with a great mechanic in town. And we'd be lost without this contractor. I know he does many things for the town. It's very convenient for us to operate. He does our repairs with the town in mind and with the town's budget in mind. So, this, this was my advice from him. For ma- maintenance of fire, pumping fire apparatus, you need to budget $10,000 a year for annual maintenance for fire apparatus. For smaller trucks, a lesser amount. For ambulances, about $5,000 to $6,000. So add all those trucks up, that kind of gives you a ballpark figure as to what we need just for annual maintenance of our fire apparatus. Anthony, anything to add?
No, you covered it all.
He said you covered it all.
Commissioner Fournier. Vice Chair Sivatellum.
Joe is still muted. We can't hear you, Joe.
How about now?
Yes, go ahead.
I thank you, Chief. Very good presentation. Hope the town council realizes what we do and gives us the money that we need, not that we want. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I, I just, you know, one other point of information. I wish it was daylight out like, like I, I got my nifty Zoom background. But the work that our personnel are doing right now is, is very difficult for them. They need a lot of support. We have members that are hesitant to go to calls. We have members that live with the elderly, other family members. They live with spouses, they have kids. And some of those may have existing medical problems. That causes them to hesitate to respond to calls based upon what we're confronted with today. It's very challenging. We will be, will augment and will adapt responses to town for fire department apparatus very soon because of that. We have an open dialogue going with our partners from Vintec. One thing that most people don't realize, and this is the most difficult thing during COVID-19. So, and it ultimately has, has an impact upon our contract with Vintec. So, if you're an employee of Vintec and you're assigned to the North Ramford Division and you're scheduled to work a shift, but your full-time job is a firefighter in New Haven or West Haven or you're a paramedic for AMR or another ambulance provider and you get exposed from that other place of employment and you're isolated or you're quarantined, it means you're not available to work the shift in the North Ramford Division. The same thing holds true if you're a volunteer in North Ramford and you're employed someplace else and you're full-time or another part-time job. It affects them too. This is a, it's not only a local issue, not only a statewide issue, it's a national issue. Because that's what firefighters who are EMS trained, and that's what EMTs and paramedics do day in and day out. Everybody works two and three jobs. So what do they do part-time? They work for another service. And we're seeing that effect right now. There's a fire department not too distant from here. Their entire shift is isolated. What does that mean? It means that entire shift has to be covered by overtime personnel. We're not, we're not in that position. But to fill the void of one, two paramedic and EMTs on an ambulance that's required to respond 24/7 could present us with an issue down the road. So we're working on that right now. We're working on plans for surge capacity if in fact that happens. So, in the little town of North Ramford, there's a bigger picture that a lot of people don't see. We're not only responsible for our community, but we're a mutual aid partner in a larger area here. And we all have to be ready, we all have to be prepared to fulfill the region's needs. So again, if you see some of our personnel identified by the uniform on a call, please do me this favor, go up to them and tell them thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief.
Thanks. Thanks, Tommy, and thanks for the repeated phone calls. I really, really appreciate it and I convey that to the members.
Anyone have, anyone have any questions before we move on? No? All right. Thanks again, Bill, and to the commissioners. So, thank you very much. All right. Next item is 7A, road acceptance.
Good evening. Kurt Rice again. This is regarding the Shance Farm subdivision. The developer of the subdivision is offering Farmington Drive, which was constructed under the subdivision approval. They're offering it to the town for acceptance. Farmington Drive is a 4,000-foot-long, more or less road. It includes a 70-foot bridge over Farm River and some detention basins constructed as part of the project. They have constructed all improvements to town standards. It has been inspected by myself and Public Works. They have provided as-built drawings to my office of all the improvements. They provided deeds to the town attorney's office for review and approval. The town attorney has reviewed and approved the deeds. The only thing that I'm aware of remaining is that the, they have to send the final executed copies of the deeds and the easements to the town attorney's office for filing out a land replevin. That's going to be happening very shortly. In the meantime, under state statutes, under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes, there, the legislative body needs to make a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission to report. And then once they get a report, the town council gets a report back from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the actual acceptance can take place. There is a suggested motion included in the memo I prepared to refer this item to the Planning and Zoning Commission under Section 824 to report. That's pretty much it. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to take.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Ramford Town Council, under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statute, hereby refers the acceptance of Farmington Drive and the associated drainage and bridge easements and the associated drainage and bridge easements constructed as part of the Shance Farm subdivision to the North Ramf- North Ramford Planning and Zoning Commission for a report.
Second?
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next item. Next item is review and approval of bid number one, 2020, 2021 rental list portable to plan.
Yes, and Tom, that actually, there's a type of misspelling on that item. It's actually the approval of the bid specifications. It should read for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a question in regards to this. Given what's happening right now and everything being closed and we don't know how long this is going on, is there any language that can be put into this bid spec that even though it's like a July to June thing, if, if we don't have them for all the months that we need them, we aren't seeing the full price, whatever the bid comes in at? Is there something that can be added to this?
Yeah, I, I would defer to maybe Vin Marino, but I, I don't, I don't see that. I think that's sometimes standard language. We could, I think we could look at and add that, but I'd defer to Vin.
Yeah, I would, I would say we could add a provision that basically says that to the extent that the time of, of the bid, the time is reduced because of COVID-19, that it'll be
Rated?
Reduced on a per rata basis.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sorry, there, Mike.
I like that.
This way you get credit for every day that you don't have it.
Okay. So if that change can be made in the bid spec?
Yeah, I think it would be actually Section 4, I mean, Page 4, Item 5. It just, I think that's where we would modify it specifically to COVID, COVID or any other, I guess, if, if we have to be that specific. Is that, is, Vin, is that broad enough on 5 to, where it's just the town or the board reserves the right to add or reduce the number of, of units to an area, add or delete facilities, or extend the dates of use at any facility up to termination dates of this contract? Or?
Let's not reference anything like COVID because there could be a hurricane in August.
Right.
That could affect.
So is that close, okay? Yeah, well, then, let me, I'll work with you on, on modifying that, I guess, Item 5. Give us the most flexibility to, to handle that.
Could be something in there about how parks or playgrounds are closed down for an extended period of time, maybe. Yeah, Walter Goode again. Everything that we can, we gotta do that with. Everything. Anything we could do something like that with, do it.
So Mike Paulus, will we table, we should table this and you'll update it and bring it back?
Well, I mean, I can, but I, unless there are any other questions, I, I, I think we could, we can deal with that modification if you give us, you know, between myself and the town attorney authorization to modify as appropriate language as necessary. And, and I think we can get it out.
Yeah, I, I would make that motion that we approve it with the modified language. About the parks, you know, being closed or something to that matter.
I second that. Any further discussion?
Who just seconded that?
Walter Goode.
Thank you. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Review of RFP number one, 2020, 21, solid waste service.
Right, there's a package in, in your, or there's a memo in your packet, and simply the request is based on, on the proposals, that the recommendation is we collapse the bid and go with the current contractor and extend that out.
For the sake of discussion, I move that we, I make a motion that we approve John's refuse continuation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let's just stop first.
Okay.
We had an issue with John's, and we resolved it by Mike Paulus finding an alternate might bring our waste to that essentially gave us free recycling for a period of time. I don't remember how long that was.
Two years.
Yeah, I think you're right. My concern is that's going to lapse at some point fairly soon. Is that going to come back to haunt us in terms of our contractual relationship with John's?
I believe it's good for another year, Joe.
Yeah.
Should be good for the length of this program.
Is that your understanding, Mike Paulus?
Yes, it is. And I, I have, I believe Michelle Knockwood's on the call as well on this meeting. Michelle, can, can you hear us way in? Maybe not. I think there's a chat. Hold on, I think she's got something there.
Is there some kind of static going on that's making it very difficult to hear varying people?
Yeah. We're getting a note that she's on adding.
Right. Yeah.
Says she has one more year effective, 7-1.
Right.
She's adding.
Okay, all right, I'm good then. Thank you. Thank you, dear.
So Tom, I think, I, I don't know if there are any other questions. I think there was a, I believe a motion and a second.
Or a vote, Michelle?
Michelle, can you hear us? Michelle is on mute.
Okay, from what I heard, it was Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Duty.
Correct.
Is all in favor? Anyone opposed? Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Item D, Amendment to Ordinance Number 221, Tax Relief for the Elderly and Totally Disabled.
Yeah, so there's a long document there that Attorney Marino and Dave Ambrose had worked through for, for this ordinance. And it's going to require a amendment, a proposed amendment to the ordinance, which will require us to set a public hearing for April 21st. And this is referenced, obviously, to the COVID and the ability to, to modify or change the, the application process, to hold, hold open, I believe, is the, is, is what we're able to do.
All right, so what is it you're looking for, Mike? A motion to set a public hearing?
Exactly, yep. Motion to move this to set a public hearing date for the 21st at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any further discussion? No? Michelle?
Just to make sure I'm on the right, this is for the amendment to Ordinance Number 221, Tax Relief for the Elderly and Totally Disabled?
Correct.
Okay, so I have that Counselor Fawnin moved, Counselor Angeloni seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
And I believe our last item is discussion, any discussion on the Potato Fest and the Memorial Day Parade?
Actually, we have Item, Item E, which is the discussion on the tax deferral program pursuant to
I missed that, sorry. Yep, sorry. E, discussion on tax deferral program?
Right, and, and again, this is a product that Attorney Marino, working with, can pursuant to Executive Order 7S, allowing the municipality to take action to extend, in some cases, or a choice. And I'll, I'll let Vin speak to that with respect to what the town has the ability to do during this or because of this COVID crisis.
Yes, thank you. So the governor came out with an executive order that mandated that municipalities adopt one of the two programs or both. The first program is the deferment program. The second program is a low-interest rate program. The second program, which would effectively for 90 days, reduce the delinquency interest rate from 18% to 3% per annum. The tax collector has requested that we not adopt that program because it would create havoc with his computer program. And so he's asked us not even to consider that. So what we put forward was the tax deferment program. And any eligible taxpayer, and the eligible taxpayer is a taxpayer that is yet to be defined, it's going to be defined by the Secretary of OPM, will be eligible for a 90-day deferment of their taxes without penalty. And that's basically it because of what is happening with COVID and so many people becoming unemployed. It is simply to give a little relief to the taxpayers. Now, since I drafted that, because of that resolution, this issue has been in flux. But every, every issue related to any executive order that this governor has issued has been questioned and somewhat ambiguous. So this was no different. There was a lot of conversation that was had amongst the towns, the governor's office, OPM, since I drafted that resolution. And that resolution simply uses the language of the executive order, so it's fine. But OPM issued a form where, and Mike, if you don't have it, I'll forward it to you, where basically you'll check a box, are you taking the deferment program or the low-interest program? And then the tax collector ultimately will give an instruction on what a eligible taxpayer is.
Vin, I don't see that 90-day provision in your, in your proposed motion.
The way, because when I was drafting that, there was still a lot of confusion and ambiguity. Joe, if you actually compare the executive order to that resolution, I basically took his executive order and broke it out into the whereas and now therefore. Basically, what you're doing through this resolution is empowering your tax collector to extend the deferment program to the taxpayers of your community, whatever that is. And ultimately, what it has become is a 90-day deferment program.
So should we, should we adopt a resolution that we resolve to comply with the most recent rendition of the governor's executive order on tax deferments?
You could, you could adopt the resolution as, you know, maybe as a, as maybe amended from time to time, you know, as that program may be altered from time to time? Because I do think there's issues that have to be worked out with the program still.
Hey, Joe, did you say you didn't see the 90 days?
Not in the draft I got in my package, Tom.
Yeah, it's, it's in the sixth paragraph.
Boy, I'm looking at something entirely different, Tom.
On page 53 of the iPad. That were you at, Joe?
Thanks, Rose. I've got a mess of paper here and iPad that's running out of power. I'll go with you guys. You tell me what you're voting on.
Joe, I don't even have it in front of me, so I was taking your word. It wasn't there.
Yeah, it's in Paragraph 6, the second, be it further resolved, that 90 days is deferment of 90 days on any taxes or on real property. So it's, it's, it's in there.
Great, okay.
Not to interrupt, but to interrupt. Do I have any of these motions? Or can I find any of them anywhere?
It should be in the packet.
Okay, so I have to get the packet.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get that out to you for sure. I, I, yeah, I forgot, you don't have access to the Dropbox. I'll have to get that to you.
Okay, because I can type really quickly, but not
It's two pages, Michelle.
Yeah, so I can't do that, Rose.
I'll have to get you access to the Dropbox, Michelle.
All right, thank you so much. I apologize.
It's okay. You're, you're very good, Michelle, but I didn't think you were that good, but.
Well, I am, Rose. Just don't tell anyone.
I mean, we're not even going to read it.
Thank you.
So if I could, Vin, on the, on the resolution, it would, can, can we, does OPM give us guidelines that say that we can have across the board deferment up to 90 days for all taxpayers? Because I thought OPM was saying that, or I thought there was guidance coming out of OPM for, for doing that. Or are they still going to promulgate their rules or their guidelines as to who is going to be eligible?
I'm just opening up their form, and it is for the period of March 10th through and including July 1. Municipalities participating in the deferment program, it still shall offer to eligible taxpayers, businesses, et cetera, a deferment by 90 days on any taxes, on real property, personal property, et cetera. Eligible taxpayers, et cetera. And or those that document they are providing relief to those significantly affected by COVID. So it's, it's all the, it's all the same. Secretary of OPM shall issue guidance.
Yeah.
That's yet to come. And Mike, I'm going to forward to you now the, actually, the first form that OPM put out, there's a, they misspelled the word executive on the form. I'm going to forward it to you anyway because I have to find the corrected form. It was a moment that OPM, everyone, everyone chuckled. But I'm going to send this to you, and you'll see, this has to be returned to OPM by the 25th of April.
Okay. So even if, if we put the language in that you talked about, it's, is to be modified from time to time, then if there's guidance from, that comes out from OPM or clarification that says a municipality has the ability, if it wants to, to, to set its own guidelines or just extend it to every taxpayer, would that give
The problem is that the municipality does not have the independent The problem is that the municipality does not have the independent authority, uh, you know, it's, it's, the municipality is creature of statute, so it could only do what the law allows. So a lot of municipalities are thinking exactly what you're saying, but there is no statutory authority to, uh, to defer the taxes. I, I have reviewed, there's a statute twelve dash one-twenty-four that authorizes the, uh, legislative authority of each municipality to waive interest for the poor. And we might creatively be able to argue if any taxpayer does not have the ability to pay their taxes because of an impact by COVID, they lost their job or whatever, I think by definition, any person that cannot pay their bills is insolvent and then arguably poor. So we might be able to address that through twelve dash one-twenty-four, but I don't believe that they're going to extend this to all taxpayers.
Yeah, Anthony was able to find, uh, something came out late today, uh, I believe it was, yeah, well, it's, it's OPM's guidance, um, and explanation. Uh, and I'll have to, I'll have to send that over to you, um-
No, I, I see that, but that's not what the executive order says. Uh, so we're going to have to get further clarification on that before we take action. It wouldn't be the first time, but I, I don't see the authority for doing that.
Okay, so what, what do you recommend in terms, should we hold off and, and, uh-
You have, uh, because you have to get something back to them by the end of April, I would suggest you adopt the, uh, uh, the resolution, uh, for the deferment program, and simply at the end of the, uh, resolution, we'll say as may be amended from time to time.
Okay.
Or as may be modified from time to time. Basically, I tried to write that so that we're just authorizing the taxpayer, uh, the tax collector to implement the program. And OPM will basically state how the program is to be run, and if there's an opportunity to extend to all taxpayers, we can come back and do that at a date between now and July first.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, the deferment program pursuant to Executive Order number seven S, section six A, with the modification, um, suggested by Attorney Moreno, adding, um, to be modified as needed from time to time, whatever his wording was.
Second.
I think that should be as may be modified.
As may be modified, okay.
Any further discussion? I think you're putting the tax collector in a bad situation.
All right, okay. Um, not really sure how that motion is supposed to go, but to, motion is to modify to section seven S, section six A, as suggested by Town Attorney Moreno, as may be modified as needed from time to time? I'm just not sure of the-
Finn, why don't you send Michelle the precise language you're comfortable with?
That's, that's what, and Michelle, for purposes of your notes, I, I believe it's, your, uh, motion to adopt the resolu-, uh, the motion to adopt the resolution as presented with a mo-, with the amendment that the words as may be amended from ti-, or as may be modified from time to time be added, but I'll, I'll send an email.
That, that would be great. Okay, so you, the resolution has to be modified with the amendment, okay. Can you all hear me? I hear just, there's such, okay. Um, with all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay, thanks.
Okay, now we're at the last item. Uh, any discussion on the, uh, Data Fest and the Memorial Day Parade?
Well, based on the information that we received from the Park and Rec Commission and their recommendation, um, I would just like to table any decision on the Poco Fest until mid-May.
Until when, Rose?
Mid-May.
And with, yeah, same as in Memorial Day Parade, because, you know, if we could do something smaller, it'd be fine. We should be able to know more on that. They, um, I believe he wanted, what, a couple more weeks, so maybe at our next meeting, we just keep it on the agenda.
Well, we'd have to make a decision bef- before mid-May, don't like that because of the parade, so that's going to take a little-
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't foresee a, a full parade, but we probably could foresee, you know, a little Memorial Day celebration, you know, recognition on the green or whatever.
We did order flags for the-
If, you know, we're past the stage of any concern with the virus. If not, then that'll have to be, you know, canceled too.
I think Mike is right. We ought to hold out as long as we can, try to preserve whatever we can do.
Okay, all right, so.
Can I, um, can I chime in? This is, uh, Steve Torino from the Park and Rec Commission on the, the, since the agenda says discussion of upcoming events, um, regarding the festival, is there any way that the council can reword the fireworks bid? With, uh, like, would include maybe a penalty as opposed to bond performance, because we had no takers? And, uh, spoke with some of the vendors, and it seemed to be the biggest hurdle as far as moving forward with getting someone to submit a bid in regards to fireworks. So if we take the bid performance bond out and add a penalty, a set amount that maybe the town attorney can, uh, incorporate into the bid, that would allow the, uh, vendor, they don't show up, they in, in accrue all the costs associated, uh, any legal fees and a hefty penalty for not coming, as opposed to bid performance bond. I guess there's a problem with a lot of, uh, liquidity and, and tactic at this juncture.
So is that new language, the bid performance or the performance bid language, is that new in the, because this isn't the first year we've done this contract?
I've, um, I guess I will defer that to the town manager. I did speak to Michelle and, and to the, uh, director and to the coordinator, and the language has been in there in previous years. Um, my understanding, take this with a grain of salt, I don't know how much it's been enforced.
And then, um, can we have a performance bond on fireworks? I mean, that seems ridiculous.
Uh, I would s-
It, it, it's not where, you know, the street's not paved right, or, you know?
Well, it's, it's not a, a performance bond like in the land use sense. Uh, arguably, you know, you could have a surety bond, uh, I mean, it's, it's, you're going to put out a bid and you're going to say this is a requirement. You may, I don't know who's going to, you know, who's going to bid, and you may lose bidders because of it, uh, but-
And I think that's what we did. We lost bidders.
And I mean, if the language has been in there, but it hasn't been enforced, well, then why do we have the language in there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll review. I, I know that, that language has been in there, and, and I'm, I'm, I'll have to review in terms of past, uh, bid, uh, packages and awards, but, um, to the, to finding a solution or, uh, to getting a result that, that protects the town, I, I suppose we couldn't remove the performance bond, as Steve indicated, and go with a penalty instead. But some way to protect the town should the, I mean, people come for the, for the festival, for the, for the purpose of, it's a big draw. So if you don't have, uh, if you don't have fireworks, uh, it's a big problem. Um, so I think, I think that's, it could be a, a great solution alternative, uh, to try and put a penalty, and I can work with Vin. We can, we can look at, uh, language that we could, that we think makes sense in that way, uh, and still try to meet the objective of get bidders to, to respond to the bid and still protect the town at the same time.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I, I'll, I'll work, I'll work on that, and, and, uh, we can bring it back to a, a, a future meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
Before we, um, are, are we all, that, we're done?
No, you have, um, on the, uh, the revised agenda, the, um, the, uh, tax collection policy. I'm going to let, uh, Anthony speak to, to that issue, uh, because of this, um, whole, uh, process that we're in with, with COVID. Uh, us, we, we just can't do that without the council's, um, authority.
I, I just have a correction to make on the, um, on fourteen forty-four Middletown Avenue. Um, as I was reading it, it says, "Property owner Michael Duty."
Mark.
Uh, this is from, uh, to Kurt Weiss from East Shore Health. And down below, it says, "Property owner Mark Duty under carbon copy." And it should be Mark Duty under carbon copy, and I abstained from that vote because he's a nephew of mine. But I didn't realize my name was in that letter going to Kurt.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I believe that's the le-, that, that, you're right, you're right, uh, that's, uh, that's from Alex, uh, I think from East Shore.
Yeah, Alex Sinati.
Uh, uh, yeah, and I, I think, yeah, and Michael instead of Mark is, is listed at the top, you're right, and, uh, we'll have to correct that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Here's Ann.
Okay, in your packet, you should have a copy of the tax collection process that you folks adopted back in twenty-fourteen. And typically what happens is after the second payment is due in January, and anybody that doesn't pay, in February, we send out delinquent notices, kind of like, hey, you might have forgot this payment, uh, you know, check your records kind of thing. If they still remained, uh, unpaid in March, we send out a, a demand notice, which is a little bit more harsher. And then typically what happens after they still continue not to pay, in April, uh, thereabouts, we usually send the delinquent taxpayers to a state marshal, uh, for a period of sixty days, and then subsequently to a collection agency, uh, who collects the, uh, delinquent taxes for us. Um, and both of those steps, the taxpayer incurs about a fifteen percent per state statute, uh, fee to either the collection agency or the state marshal. And, uh, in light of the economic situation that we're in, uh, in discussion with the town attorney recently, myself and collector and the town manager, we felt it might be a benevolent thing to do to stop at the demand notices for the eighteen grand list bills that remain outstanding. Um, there are fourteen hundred and seventy-eight still outstanding bills that fall into that category. Uh, you know, whether they are related to COVID-nineteen or not, we just kind of felt it would not be appropriate for us to pursue additional collection efforts, uh, in this environmental situation, uh, economic situation. But because the policy calls for us to do that, uh, to deviate from the policy, uh, would require your folks' vote.
So you're saying just erase those, Anthony?
No, negative. No, what I'm saying is that we're not, the bills will stay on the books, it'll accrue eighteen percent interest. We just won't send them to the marshal or the collection agency. They'll continue to be delinquent bills, it's linked with eighteen percent interest. Uh, we're just not going to pursue the next steps in the collection process that we typically do to avoid, uh, any undue financial harm to our residents in this, in this crucial period of, of our life. Um, for the real estate bills, we, we will continue to file what's called a note, intent to lien, so we don't lose our interest on, on the real estate bills, which are the larger portion of our bills, uh, and those, um, the intent to lien goes out, and in the case of real estate, what typically happens, uh, in that case, the list comes back before the council, uh, with, uh, after a person maybe has three, four, or five years' delinquent real estate taxes, and the list goes before you folks to, uh, kick over to the town attorney, uh, for his efforts at that point. That's kind of outside of this discussion currently. Uh, we'll, we'll sit on the real estate, we will file the intent to lien notices, but as it pertains to the motor vehicle, personal property, and supplemental bills, we want to halt the process after the demand notice and not have our taxpayers incur these additional costs. Again, it's only for the two thousand and eighteen grand list. Any prior years that are delinquent are already in the hands of the state marshal, uh, and the collection agency, I should say. So they've already going to have the fifteen percent, we're not going to waive that. It's just for, uh, this current number, uh, of the fourteen hundred and seventy-eight bills as of the other day. Uh, we wanted to stop the process after the demand notice and not send them to the, uh, state marshal or collection agency. But again, because it's a deviation from the policy, we need, the motion that's in your packet, you guys need to adopt.
Oh, the motion.
Sorry, Michelle.
Oh, bummer.
Did they have any questions? Or do you guys agree, or do you want, we can continue with the current policy if you guys want to. It's just a, a thought to try to be, uh, a little, uh, sympathetic in, in this period. But we could certainly leave the policy as is and just continue with the state marshal and then collection agency, it's just a-
Does anyone want to make a motion second and discuss it and?
Do you want me to read it? I, I'll move the motion as presented. Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's fair. How, how long, how long of a cushion would we give them?
Well, there's no cushion. The, the bill, the bill stays on the books, it continues to accrue eighteen percent interest. The longer they delay, the more interest they're going to pay. We're not, we're not-
You're just stepping on, just stepping on the two steps.
Correct.
Yeah.
They're not paying, they're not paying the extra fees for the marshal and everything else.
That's correct.
That, that's what gets eliminated.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And hopefully when they get their checks from the government, they might have-
Right.
True.
Extra money to, um-
Settle the bills, sure.
Extra money, that's funny.
We're hoping, we're hoping, we're hoping it gets to an extra money.
Michelle, did you look at the-
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
I got that Counselor Angeloni moved and, and Counselor Diamond seconded.
Aye.
A bunch of things. And if there's any other discussion?
No.
Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Think we may need to, uh, move hazardous duty pay for Michelle for tonight.
There's got to be a way to protect me.
So there is one more item that I was on the, I was using the old, uh, agenda, there's item D. Uh, review of pro- uh, proposed ordinance two thousand and twenty dash one, which amends chapter two thirteen.
Did that.
Yeah, I believe we did that.
That's different than what we just talked about, correct?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, uh, ordinance that we moved to a public hearing. Yeah, we took, we took care of that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was, I was under the, I was using the old, uh, agenda until you chimed in and said we had that one. Okay, all right, so now we're down to citizen statements and petitions. Anything?
We're, uh, stand by. We're going to check to see if we have any, uh-
To the Deputy Mayor, Steve Torino, again, if, if I may chime in, I know it's hard to facilitate some things that you guys have to do in this difficult time. Um, I'm just asking if the council can come up with a, a way to, um, move forward with a director on a full-time position as opposed to an interim position, and not defer it to our supervisor, who may potentially have to hold three positions until, um, things are resolved and we hire someone. Um, this person's currently holding two positions, and there is no guarantee that our interim director may stay. Um, and I know it's, you know, it's currently budgeted, and I, I just fear that we're going to add more, um, if we hold off and ask this person to start to do three positions as opposed to the two that she's currently doing. And secondly, um, to follow up with that, I, I know, um, there's always a silver lining in, in some disasters, but it may also be a good transition- a silver lining in, in some disasters, but it may also be a good transition period with things kind of quiet, if you will, as far as operational standpoint with all the programs running, uh, that this person or persons may be acclimated and trained, uh, with a less hectic schedule than, um, what would be normal day operations. So if you guys, I don't know if you could facilitate that via a private executive session Zoom meeting or, or what avenue that needs to go. But, um, I, I heard the comments, the last, uh, meeting by the town manager, and I understand the financial situation in town ultimately is probably going to be in, but it is a director head position and, um, would ultimately be the leader of our department, and I would much rather fill this position than have three vacancies.
I think we're paying the interim director probably as much as we were paying a director if we appoint him.
I don't, I don't, uh, I, I, I'm not allowed to get involved in, in that type of, uh, conversations. I know nothing about their salaries.
No, that was my point I made last time. Sorry about that.
So, um, well, in fairness, we didn't chime in about salaries. Um, the other thing is, since we're gonna move forward with the, um, going forward and the coordinator's gonna move forward with the Potato Festival, we're a little bit behind schedule as far as reaching out to volunteers and sponsors because we were kind of on hold until you guys met tonight. Is it possible to help the current team that's in place that may not be working, that the director allows some of those part-time staff that aren't currently working to help, uh, reach out to different organizations and, and volunteers? I don't know if that's even allowed to be, uh, a compensation.
We don't know if there's gonna be a Potato Fest.
Right, but we still have to act as if there is, I would assume. All the major stuff's kinda done outside of the fireworks. Every, everything's done according to the coordinator. In our Potato Festival meeting we had Monday night, um, so she was waiting until the decision tonight to move forward and, and continue reaching out to vendors, et cetera. She didn't wanna overstep if the council wasn't, uh, giving the blessing to move forward. I know unfortunately it's more questions as opposed to public comment, but that was my, uh, I felt that was my opportunity to chime in a little bit.
Well, thanks for, do, thanks for the comment. I don't think we're at a position to make that decision here. So we'll have to, uh, continue to, to collaborate on that. Any other, uh, was there anything on the, uh, emails or Facebook or, uh?
Nothing on emails.
No emails. We're checking for posts. Tom, I, I don't think we have anything at this time.
Oh, seven minutes, hang on.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Um, we've got it, uh.
No, just people saying.
Hank, please stand by, hold on.
Great job.
Specific questions?
Hmm, no.
Okay, yeah. Just, uh, just posts in terms of comments, no specific questions. That's it.
All right.
Um, well, hold on a second. If someone made comments, are we supposed to hear the comment?
Uh, thanks, Wal.
One thank you to Walter.
Great job.
A great job.
Uh, Cliff said the good, it's good now, the audio.
Uh, we, we improved our audio. That was the other comment.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, I mean.
Yeah, nothing of substance, uh, that, that, that was.
And great job to Vic, the cameraman.
Directed to, uh, and, and thanks to the cameraman at Tucat TV. So nothing, uh, nothing specific, uh, about the agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much.
Instead, Tommy, you look a lot younger on camera.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good job. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Good to see the wise man.